I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And CEO Hayes, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, good morning Chair Bass and members of the board. There are two modifications. Item D4 and D5 will be polled for discussion.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I know we have a couple supervisors who may want to speak to a few items. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I am. We have to recognize Dr. Baird, who's been on a worldwide tour of being recognized in the last, he had a wonderful, the medical association gave him a wonderful presentation the other night, and I'd like to read this into the record. Whereas Donald Baird is a family practice physician who received his bachelor's degree from Dartmouth before attending Virginia Commonwealth University where he received his medical degree. He completed his family practice and community health residency as well as a master of science degree in adult education at the University of Minnesota in Minneapolis. He had the opportunity to go to the former Yugoslavia on a State Department fellowship in 1972 and was present during the smallpox epidemic. Whereas he moved to Humboldt in 1976 and was the lead partner of a 15,000 patient family medicine group in Fortuna before joining the open door health clinic system in 2014. Over the years, the scope of his practice has shifted from general community medicine to adult healthcare with a special focus on chronic pain, recognition and treatment of effective disorders, and comprehensive management of chronic diseases. He has also worked as consultant for several pharmaceutical companies on the diagnosis and treatment of refractory depression and bipolar disorder. Whereas he has served as the chief of staff and medical director of hospital services at Redwood Memorial Hospital and was the medical director of a local nursing home. In 2012, he was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to the role of Humboldt County Public Health Officer, retiring in January 2020 with three separate callbacks to assist with the COVID response and health officer transitions. Dr. Baird has served on several health organizations, boards, committees, providing his experience on quality assurance projects. He has also served as an expert witness on many legal cases, certified by the California State Department of Mental Health to perform clinical psychiatric review for state program patients. And whereas Dr. Baird is still trying to retire, good luck with that, but remains working on a part-time basis to meet healthcare needs of his long-term patients, I'm going to adlib this, some of whom he drives to the hospital when they need rides and some he still makes house calls, due to the critical shortage of medical providers in our rural community. When not at work, he and his wife Colleen enjoy traveling, with one of their amazing trips being to Antarctica earlier this year. He is an avid wine collector, with an amazing cellar that he enjoys sharing with friends and family. He also enjoys photography, music, and outdoors unless it's helping his wife on her expansive yard work. Between them, he and his wife have six children, six children and a variety of careers, including an aeronautical engineer, a nurse, and a law enforcement officer. He is expecting his first grandchild in January. Best job you ever have, Doc. Whereas Dr. Baird was honored as the Frederick K. M. Plessner Memorial Award winner by the California Medical Association, which recognizes the California physician who best exemplifies the ethics and practice of a rural county practitioner. Now therefore be resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, honors, expresses our deep gratitude for Dr. Baird's contribution to the public health of the community and acknowledges recognition as the prestigious recipient of the Frederick K. M. Plessner Memorial Award. And this was given earlier in December, so we were able to deliver it at Dr. Baird's Medical Society Honors Dinner. So you've already got it, Doc, but if you want to say something, we sure appreciate it.
Yes, and he certainly will under public comment. We kind of, Don, did you mind just waiting until public comment starts? Yeah, sorry, I was trying to, but we'll go to you first as soon as we do that. Any other supervisors have something they wanted to add or read into the record? Nope, just checking. Okay, anyone else? I did want to mention we also have a human rights resolution on here as well, the proclamation, so I would like to read that into the record. And Jim, you'll also be given the opportunity to speak after that. So whereas the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in December 1948, and this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. Whereas in 2022, public awareness, a lack of civility among groups of people and individuals in their ability to discuss without anger or fear topics of the day, even concerns about the ability to vote one's conscience. And whereas our citizens strive to uphold and defend the rights of free speech. And whereas, speech whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including but not limited to statements by family members, public officials, on social media and in schools. And whereas anger and hatred can go unchallenged in our daily lives and in our schools, which leads to bullying and fear-provoking actions. And whereas the general public participates in retaliatory actions of hate and vile speech because they see no alternative. And whereas the ultimately hate, speech, intolerant language, bias, and discrimination have led to actions which are typically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases can cause physical harm. Such a transformation within our culture is now eroding and will continue to further erode the peace and tranquility our citizens expect and deserve, leading to a more violent community bringing harm to our citizens, young and old. And whereas the citizens of Humboldt County represent a small, mostly rural population center within the framework of our country, we must all act in ways, big and small, to change the climate within our control. And whereas that in December 2022, individuals, groups of people, agencies, departments, elected officials, and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony, and human rights for all, in doing so, we vow to engage hate at all levels possible during the year 2023. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people, or they exist for no one. Now therefore be it resolved that December 2022 is proclaimed Human Rights Awareness Month, and throughout the coming year, we will advocate for special civic engagement to occur, for personal reflection to take place, for continued efforts to educate the public, and for our community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views. Furthermore, the primary goals of our society in Humboldt County are to encourage all citizens to educate themselves about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, to value the privileges and freedoms we enjoy in the diverse society, and to promote engagement in causes that promote the rights and welfare of all of our citizens. And I am really glad we have this on here, especially Jim, and seeing some of the things that have been in our paper recently. I think it's definitely a good time to bring this forward. So if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and open public comment. If you're listening at home and you wish to call in, please do so now and press star nine to raise your hand. Once you have done that, turn the volume off of your video feed because there's a time delay and you might miss your opportunity to speak. We will go to those in public first, and there's a three-minute time period, and you will see the time clock right behind my head. So I think we can just start. Welcome up, I'll say Don, and then you may come up. It's public comment time. And anyone else who's in the audience who'd like to speak, and if you want to just come up right after Don, that would be great. Welcome, Dr. Baird.
Thank you. It's been a privilege to serve this county, and I think I accept this on behalf of the team that I've left behind. It's a great, great, one of the most incredible group of professionals I've ever worked with. And I think one of the, they're working 24/7 for you, keeping you safe. And one of my famous quotes early on in my tenure as health officer was, you don't get credit for what didn't happen. And that's what public health is doing, that's what law enforcement is doing, behind the scenes, making our lives possible and safe. Thank you very much. I'm still here, I'm still around, and I'm available to talk to any of you by phone if you have a gripe or something you want to have clarified. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I hope you'll stay here a little bit longer because I have a feeling there may be a few more things that have to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baird. I keep calling you Don, I'm sorry, Dr. Baird. Welcome, Michelle.
Good morning. Michelle Stevens, Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. I had the pleasure and honor of working with Dr. Baird when I was the Public Health Director starting in 2017, and I'm grateful for that time because in 2020, when he retired, that's when COVID started. And he is absolutely all the things that everybody says that he is in our community. Forty-five years, over 45 years of a career serving the community of Humboldt County is pretty remarkable. He is that person that will do what he can in any kind of a situation. So I just, I really, I'm grateful that I had the pleasure of working with him. He is absolutely willing to come back and help. He will never retire, I don't think. And I wish him the best, and I'm, congratulations on the award. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. And anyone else in the audience wish to comment on any of these items? Right, no one in the audience wants to do public comment? This is the items that are on the consent calendar, for those of you in the audience who look a little confused there. I don't see anyone here. I'm going to go to those on the phone, Nikki, since I'm having trouble getting up. Do we have hands up on the phone? Yes, we do, Chair Bass. The first caller is caller 2122. All right, 2122, if you'd like to talk about the consent calendar, this would be the time.
Good morning, supervisors. This is Uriah Driscoll calling in. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get in, in person. And yes, I would also like to thank Dr. Baird and all the doctors that have faced the challenges we have in rural Humboldt County. We need more of you. Anyway, what I was calling in today about was a consent item that's kind of buried in public works. It's about speed reduction on Fickle Hill Road, which is where I live. And of course, we've been asking for a speed reduction for many decades, actually. But this finally has come about because of a trail project the city of Arcata installed and have an encroachment permit with the county. I have been working very hard to engage with the county public works to create some safety issues that still have not been addressed. And Supervisor Wilson had promised several years ago to address, he acknowledged there were safety issues, but unfortunately we have not been able to get his engagement in this. And now we have this situation that is extremely dangerous. A dear friend and neighbor recently got really, really hurt, and a large settlement had to be paid out, not large enough, but I'm just concerned that the city has somehow lured the county into creating a very hazardous condition here in my neighborhood, that the safety issues have been brought up by multiple people, not just me. And it's just really troublesome that the county public works, that is the individual who's not, he's just not engaging in helping to solve some of these problems. And I've been very disappointed in Supervisor Wilson for not fulfilling his promise in this. So this is setting the county up for severe liability, and if another person were to get hurt or worse, the cost, not just to the person who would be injured or worse, but the county would be held extremely liable for multiple times with the existing settlements for. So that's my main point. I would really like to be a part of the solutions. I've got some good ideas, but the county public works really needs to engage the public in a much, much more better way. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Uriah. Is there another hand up?
Yes, Chair Bass, we have caller 7454.
All right, 7454, press star six to unmute.
Virginia, can you hear me this morning?
Yes, can.
You have a very long lag this time, and so I think I timed it out at over 20 seconds between your screen and telephone. Your telephone didn't come on for a minute or two at the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, so we're having our technological difficulties. So I wish to make comment on number three. I pretend at least to have communication with Mother Nature, and I think everything indicates that our drought conditions may be on their way to being over. I mean, we see the rainfall, we see the snow packs all throughout California and the rest of our area, coming up, heading toward a very good year. So let's keep our fingers crossed that that drought thing can be taken off of the agenda pretty soon. Regarding the prior caller, I had enough concern as to do a site visit there, and I have had response. Tom Madison got right back to me, and I spoke to Tom regarding my concerns because we're under, I can think, a consent decree with the federal government regarding ADA compliance. And in my opinion, that has not been met within the bounds of the county's jurisdiction and actually, and they're right away up there on this particular Fickle Hill Road. Did make the site inspection. This is an area where I think more than mileage needs to be done. I don't think you can put a roundabout in there to calm traffic, but you do need an area where people crossing this very busy road, people I observed going by probably 50 miles an hour in what is now to be a 25 mile an hour zone, need to have flashing lights where the people crossing this road can do so safely without further chance of injury. The injury item question that was referred to by the prior speaker, if I recall right, was a $3.9 million settlement, and I'd hate to see the county being involved in one of those kind of things again. So Tom assured me that he would be doing a site visit up there, and I'd be happy to meet with Tom and Mr. Bronco or whatever. And there's other areas that are not within the county jurisdiction, and the same thing, safe paths for people enjoying a wonderful trail system, whether it be pedestrians, bicycles, or people riding horses, need to be safe in these areas, and this is not a safe situation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on these two consent items today.
All right, thank you. And Nikki, is there any other hands? I'm having a hard time getting internet in here.
No, Madam Chair, there are no more callers.
All right, so we'll go back to the board. I did want to say a few things about Dr. Baird, just from my personal experience with him. Yeah, everybody, it's not often that people kind of like arm wrestle and fight to see who gets to read the proclamation, but in this case, it kind of came down to that. Because I know we both, Supervisor Bone and I, and I suspect you may know some of the other supervisors, I think very highly of you, and I was really sad to see you leave the county. But I was really thrilled when your wife called about the honor you were receiving. And I'm sorry that I couldn't be there at your house at that day and then also at your event. But it was interesting from the standpoint, I think I got to know you most when I worked for Eli Lilly as a pharmaceutical sales rep. I learned more from Dr. Baird than I did anybody else, including what I learned at Lilly. And I think from his time that you took to speak to me, a lot of doctors used to run away. It's kind of funny, I never realized that until I was in that position. And you taught me a lot. And I think, you know, what I learned from you, especially regards mental health, really has helped me in this job, and it made me a lot more compassionate and aware of what people are going through. So truly appreciated that with you. It was great to be on the team that hired you here. And after you've kind of retired, you spent time with me when my mom had issues, and just always appreciated your generosity of your time. And also, you had a great, you did give me some pretty good hints about some great wineries. I have to thank you for that as well. So was really happy to see this, happy to see you here, and happy to know you'll still take our calls. Anyone else care to say, Supervisor Bone?
Humboldt County's version of Dr. Welby. I mean, if you would have seen the video at his, the medical association's meeting, there were people on there who had saved, he had saved their life, and they were willing to say that. And I don't think that was just one, I think that was many. And it's pretty hard to find anybody to say a harsh word about Dr. Baird. As was mentioned earlier, as Michelle said, he was great to work with, and he was a great asset to the community. He helped me out with EMS quite a bit, aren't the most exciting meetings to go, but he seemed to make a few of them and was very helpful on those lines. So he'll still be around because, it's not because he, it's because he wants to be. It's not because he, and he needs to be, but he wants to be because I think service is in his blood, and he just likes taking care of people. So, Dr. Welby, thank you.
I used to watch that show all the time.
There's only a few of us that probably know what that is.
Marcus Welby. Supervisor Wilson?
Hey, Don. I just want to, I'll just take a smaller slice, I think, which is, has to do with your advocacy around the general plan process and how we design communities, both in the land use perspective and even just how we approach streets and how we approach the way we move through the community. And I think you spoke clearly when, the message is, you're saving lives, but we don't even know it because, just from the, you know, in these, in that work, in advocacy for safer routes to schools, and advocacy for, around tobacco issues, and advocacy around these things that save lives, that we just, there's the saving lives on the, you know, in the surgery room, or in the doctor's office, or, you know, and in people's homes, but then there's just the saving lives in how we design and create and advocate for safer space and safer communities. And I, and your voice was strong in those processes. And I'm going to say probably when we hit those things again, we'll hear from you again on those things. So I want to just put out my appreciation for that piece of it. So, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Any other comments from board members? All right, I think we're ready to, did you have a comment?
I have.
Okay, and then we're ready to vote.
I just, I didn't have the opportunity, being newish, and congratulations on your retirement.
As long as my wife is a guardian, I'll keep working.
That's not a bad thing.
All right. So I think we are ready, and can we do a roll call since I'm having a hard time getting on, and I know Supervisor Will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Supervisor Bone has a plan, so.
I'll go ahead and, I'll do a roll call. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Medron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
All right, so thank you for being here, those of you who were part of this. At this point, we'll move on to items, well, not on items, comment on items that are not on the agenda. This is the opportunity for public members to speak on items that were not officially on the agenda today. If you're interested in doing so, press star nine to raise your hand. Nikki, do we have anyone online that'll do that first?
We have no callers with their hands up at this moment.
Well, then, I will go back to that one. But if you're interested, raise your hand now. We'll go to those who are in the public, and welcome, Linda.
Good morning. Welcome. Thank you for the welcome. I go by the name Lyndal Lee Casera, as one of the people doing my public duty. I'm a woman standing on land and soil jurisdiction in the California State Republic, California National. If we were to change places with you, if I was to change places with you, I hope you would come forth and remind me of my duties, responsibilities, and accountability that is the office, as a position I claim. This is the land and soil jurisdiction versus commercial water jurisdiction. We have people versus communism, we have people versus anti-American. How do you distinguish theft from taxation? I was here when Michael Downey was appointed as coroner, and I read county supervisor's rules specifically stating that no added duties can be added to the sheriff. I was here when infamous one half percent retail sales tax was unlawfully passed with mere majority via a second title and other essential necessities unlawfully added to safety and Humboldt ballot, and imposed throughout Humboldt. And I read California state rules regarding taxation in that a claimed unincorporated county cannot tax in the incorporated parts of the county. That would be Trinidad, Arcata, Blue Lake, Eureka, Ferndale, Fortuna, and Rialto. I was here when the Council Culture, Commercial, Medical, Marijuana, Land Use Ordinance card was played. Some of you remember me from my two 2016 litigations, theft in the term form, in the form of sales tax, and theft in the form of destroying the one thing that could save the planet. As paraphrased Jack Hare from The Emperor Wears No Clothes. I was here and read that 1963 court ruling on People versus Quimby, a person to fill a term of office is not permitted to assume the duties of the office until he files a bond and oath of office, which must be done before the commencement of the term, or the office shall be deemed vacant. If the county you live on is the only one out of 58 that can't produce a comprehensive annual financial report, I think you would agree the offices are vacant. I was here and served the following documents, and/or certified mail with signature return receipts, notice of fraud, notice of personal liability, notice of trespass, proof of treason and sabotage, bar notice, and international notice. When the presiding judge upstairs admits in open court that she has no jurisdiction and insinesse fraudulent lien on the roof of your head, what would you do? My home was sold on a courthouse step September 23rd. Redemption period is 90 days, which is December 23rd. What would you do? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to comment on an item that is not on our agenda today? All right, so we will go to those on the phone. I know we have one hand up. 7454, press star six to unmute.
Yeah, it took a little while for your verbal prompt there. You know, the prior speaker there, it's sometimes hard for me to understand things, but some things are resonating that she said there that have kind of come to fruition, so I guess I won't make comment on those. I wish to say today is a very interesting day. The future of Humboldt County in many ways may be decided today. We have the boom process where our two offshore and the three Marlowe Bay sites are being bid on by some of the biggest groups in the world as far as potential offshore wind. I had a nice conversation with Matthew Marshall, I guess. You can actually go to the boom site and attend that and see how this process is working. According to Matthew, if I recall, there are seven main players in it at this time. And it's very interesting how this seems to be, it seemed to be some round robin bouncing around from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I think there's 20 minutes or something roughly, if I understood that, when a bid on an area comes up before it moves on to another thing. I'm guessing that later in the day, we will hear exactly who our potential bidders are on these five, or potential successful bidders on these five sites are. And I don't know, maybe other people will jump in later, and bidding, bidding's always a real interesting process. When do you show your hand? How do you play it? Who's going to partner up with each other on this thing? I'll be quite honest with you, my opinion is Mother Nature is not going to tolerate this off our coast. We could end up with 150 of those on the ocean floor or on our beaches, the potential catastrophe were one of these things being towed out of a van tipping over. I think there's only like 10 boats that actually can tow these things out, according to some information I saw out there. I haven't fact-checked that. Very interesting day. I highly recommend that your staff track this bidding, and even though it's not agendized, the public would really like to know as soon as possible the effect that this will have and the benefits, community benefits which we may incur. I noticed there was a person, Mr. Tucker, I think it was, who seems to be all of a sudden a major player, that was in one of the articles there, and of course with our tribes, or it's very important that our tribes get to participate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here, and future topics, I'm going to have a little bit of topic speaking on racist and the term used as far as being racist, and how I don't feel I'm one, and I think very few of us feel we are ones, but it's an interesting term, and I think we should explore how this term is abused. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is 7325. Press star six if you want to speak on items not on the agenda.
Hi, this is Sal Munoz with the Redwood Parks Conservancy. I just wanted to call in and introduce myself, and also let you know what the Redwood Parks Conservancy is doing in Humboldt County. We're basically doing three projects. One is with Measure V. We're supporting the lifeguards with the state parks, and they're doing the junior lifeguards program. Then we are also going to be working in Humboldt County by hiring 10 youth who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, and they're going to be paid close to living wage with funds from the AmeriCorps program, and they're going to be working in state and national parks, possibly some in county parks, and they're going to be developing skills so that we have them ready, job-ready. Hopefully, they're going to be with us for a year, and hopefully before they end their time with us, they will have a job offer so that they don't fall into homelessness again. We're also working with the Redwood National Park in Humboldt County to be able to have youth and children access the parks, so there's day trips and backpacking trips to different, you know, groups. We're working with Humboldt County to be able to provide the access and recruit the youth. We will be, with the Redwood Parks Conservancy, will be requesting some meetings with all of you, with all the supervisors, to be able meetings with all of you, with all the supervisors, to be able to just personally present the programs that we're managing and also to get your insight and your input in terms of those programs, anything that you think would be important to incorporate. So, yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we will be following up with an email, phone call. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. And I see no other hands up. So we'll go back to our meeting and we'll move on to items pulled from the consent. And the first one is the, is item four, resolution recognizing Singing Trees Recovery Center. And I believe Supervisor Bushnell wanted to talk to this one.
Thank you. I want to read this in, read this. And then if there was, I pulled it because in case there was discussion, more discussion. So Singing Trees was a recovery center in the Southern Humboldt area that's been there for 30 years, 31 years, and has been instrumental in lots of recovery for local Humboldt County residents, as well as residences outside of Humboldt County and in many states. So I spoke with Patty Watson, who was running Singing Trees, and she is, has an obligation this morning, so couldn't attend. But she says thank you to the board very much for recognition. So whereas, after more than three decades of helping people struggling with addiction, Singing Trees Recovery Center permanently closed its doors last month. And whereas Singing Trees opened in early 1991, after Chuck Watson and his friends decided to open a treatment center in Southern Humboldt on the family property. And whereas Chuck Watson's sister Patty Watson joined the team by working in the office and eventually took over as co-owner with her brother. And in 2016, Patty became the sole owner of the facility. And whereas Singing Trees was known for its beautiful location that provided a calming setting for detox and recovery. And whereas the center served people from not only Humboldt, but from all over Northern California. And whereas Singing Trees offered a variety of different treatments for people who wanted, needed help with their addictions, and held 20 beds, and had a full staff of three counselors who led 12-step meeting groups and counseling, one-on-one counseling, holistic healing, and yoga classes. And whereas nature was an important part for many in recovery at Singing Trees, where clients were encouraged to sit under the redwoods, hike through the property, and swim in the Ill River. And whereas the center helped open alcoholic anonymous and narcotic anonymous meetings and a very popular Sunday lunch meeting with a free meal for 28 years that many people attended and still remember today. And whereas the COVID pandemic had a very negative effect on the center and created an unstable work environment, thus leading to the reduction of services and staff that the center could not financially overcome, leading to the last residents finishing their programs on October 13th, 2022. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes the incredible and positive impact that Singing Trees Recovery Center had on the community for over 31 years, and thanks them for their years of service. So. Yes, I would move to accept the proclamation. Thank you. Also, Patty wanted to say that she, when COVID hit, she got help from, and I'm just going to lose it, Jason Lyles actually helped them with getting the PPE loans. It was very instrumental in them being able to stay open for the two years that they did. And she really wants to thank him and Huffman's office for their help. And, you know, my son, my middle son went through a program, Singing Trees program, and he was there for four months. And he's been sober for six years from alcohol. It was very instrumental to him, the counseling services. And him and I attended the Sunday dinners. And the camaraderie that he felt there is very much the reason why it's been a success for him. And I'm really sad to lose this in the Southern Humboldt area as well. Patty shopped at all of our local stores for the residents there. And so we're also going to be losing that aspect of another business supporting local brick and mortars. So it's a, it's a really sad time for the Southern Humboldt area to be losing Singing Trees.
Hannah, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I wanted to, I appreciate the, I mean, it's sad that these, you know, spaces like this closed down because nothing, nothing lasts forever, generally speaking. So we're appreciative of the time that these folks worked on, on these important issues within this, this space. But I wanted to just bring out again, a smaller slice of that, which is John McManus, who, yeah, who, whose life was saved by the, by Singing Trees and then, you know, took inspiration from that space to then create the waterfront center. Yeah. And some, and other places too.
He worked there.
Yeah. And he worked there. But I'm just saying, it's like that, that, and so the work that they've done does live on and has inspired more of that in our community. So I just wanted to recognize that it's, that doesn't just, you know, end with this organization, that it actually has, has, has grown in other ways and other spaces. And hopefully, it'll keep doing that. So anyways, just a thank you to them. You never know how, how the things that you do kind of can make other, other things happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll go to public comment. If you're planning on commenting on this item, you should, and you're listening, you should press star nine so we know you're there. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to comment on this specific item? All right, seeing none. I'm not seeing any speakers yet. All right. So we'll go back to the board. We have a motion in a second. And I believe we're ready to vote. I got my screen up too.
I think there's been. I always wondered what had happened.
They got in already.
Did it come up on everybody's now?
Came up to, well, most everybody's. There's a password problem over here.
Okay. Well, I'll do a roll call vote. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you. And this next item that was polled, also comes to us, pulled by Supervisor Bushnell, and it's the County Clerk Recorder Register of Voters regarding appointment of special district directors. And I do think Ms. Sanders is on Zoom. Kelly, are you there?
I am. I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning. So Supervisor Bushnell, I'll hand it to you first and.
Um, sure. I became aware two weeks ago that the Wiatte Water District Board does not have a quorum. They have two members. And so we, I got a letter earlier this week of an interested party to be appointed. We had originally two interested parties, but I haven't received the letter of the second. I spoke with Kelly last week, and both are, or the one, it would be Dave, David Sundberg, is registered in, in Wiatte as a voter, and she said he qualifies. So I think I'll pass it over to Kelly, and we can see what we're going to do here.
Yes, it's within the board's authority to go ahead and appoint in lieu of an election. Yeah, it's my understanding as well that the board has been struggling very, it's been a very difficult time for them to obtain prospective candidates to fill those seats. The, the other candidate, while you haven't received a letter from her, she also qualified. So I, I think it's up to the board whether they want to go ahead and appoint both, or if they just want to appoint one for now. But they do not have a quorum right now. So they're pretty much dead in the water to be able to move forward.
Thank you, Kelly. So I had received an email from the young lady saying that she was interested in being appointed. I have reached out to her to confirm that she still wants to be appointed, and I haven't received communication. So I, I don't know what to do at this point. I guess we could appoint her, and then if she doesn't do it, and we could get it done. So at this point, I would like to modify the state of individuals to be appointed to the Wiatte Community Service District by replacing the two vacancies, seats with an appointment of David Sundberg and Kelly Buck.
Second, the motion.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Any supervisors want to speak to this motion? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing that forward, Supervisor Bushnell. It's so critical to have enough bodies to really do the business of these districts. And we're kind of seeing it trend lately where it's getting harder and harder to find people to step up and fill these roles. So I want to thank Mr. Byteman in McKinneyville, as well as the other applicants that stepped forward to, to fill the third seat that was available there. There was three seats open, only two ran for office. So this is one of those where we're filling that position. But I want to thank all of those that are stepping up to this public service because it is such a critical thing.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I agree. Thank you, Supervisor Madron. I also.
No.
I do have the letter from David Sundberg. If my board is interested, I could read it. If you all are fine, that's all right also. Okay. So, thank you.
All right. Supervisor Bone?
I think it goes a long way if you respect the people that step up, because I'll tell you what, these are non-paying volunteer positions, and you never get thanked. All you do is get doo-doo heaped on you. So I'm just saying, until there's a respect level, we have people getting off these boards continuously because I'm, I'm just not going to take the abuse that I get from certain members that show up at every meeting and babble about nothing or, or attack them. So you can understand why some of these people, it's just not a good place to be in unless, until we have some civil obedience at these small meetings, which don't allow, it's usually just the board there with a few people, it gets to be problematic. And that's, that's the biggest reason. So.
All right. Well, we will go to public comment on this. If you're wanting to comment, press star nine if you are at home. Is there anyone in the audience here who cared to comment on this item? All right. I'm looking at the screen. I do not see any of you speakers yet. Nope, nope. All right. Going back to the board. So we have a motion in a second. Did you get into your computer yet? Did it try again? Okay. Maybe I've.
Just wants me to talk, apparently. Okay. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
All right. So now we'll move on to matters initiated by board members. The first one I'm bringing forward, and I know we have some staff here who can help us in, as we move forward on this conversation. So in the past, we'd had on the ballot the opportunity, you know, whether the community thought it was a good idea to create the Department of Finance. It didn't pass, which, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why things go to the ballot, to know what the community thinks. But several people have mentioned during the last year that they'd be kind of interested in revisiting that and why, why we have this thing set up the way they are. So it just seemed like it could be a good opportunity to at least have a conversation. We're not putting anything on the ballot today. This would just be to see if there's interest from the board and also to hear from staff. I know Tabitha's done quite a bit of work on this, I believe, and can explain what the benefits could be, perhaps the drawbacks. And we can direct staff to come back and with more information. And I, that's just basically how I'm thinking this conversation's going to go. CAO is, okay. So at this time, Tabitha, did you want to kind of share your thoughts? And then the board can ask the questions.
Certainly. Thank you. Tabitha Miller, Assistant County Administrative Officer, Chief Financial Officer. So I think you, you put a good context on this, Supervisor Bass, which is, this is sort of trying to feel out the board and get some direction as far as what additional research and information you may want if you're interested in potentially restructuring your elected officials, the auditor, the controller, and your treasurer, tax collector, or looking at a Department of Finance. And as you know, you did bring this in 2016, and it was not successful. Couple of things that I wanted to just clarify here. One is that there are, the first opportunity to bring this is actually not June of 2024. It would be March of 2024. But that's also, there's a fall federal election that you may want to also consider if you decide to come forward, which may have a bigger number of voters come out. So those are, those are things that, just to keep kind of in the, in the background as far as if you explore this issue further. The other thing that we are focused here on what, what was, what was brought forward in, in 2016, which is focused on the Government Code Section 26980. And that's basically taking the two elected positions, the auditor, controller, and the treasurer, tax collector, combining those into a Department of Finance. And then there's a second piece of that Government Code Section, which is asking the question whether that department head, that newly created department head should be elected or appointed. But there's lots, when you look at what other counties in California are doing, there are a lot of sort of variations on this. And it is something that you might want to look at a little bit more in depth if you choose to, to go this route, or even to consider going this route. So I found five counties that have a Department of Finance, two with appointed department heads, King, or excuse me, Marin County and Santa Clara, three that have elected. In addition to that, there are a number of counties at both the large and small size that have combined the treasurer, tax collector, and the auditor, controller into one position. So it does very much the same thing, but it's, it's a little bit different. Most of those are elected, but there are a few that are appointed. There are also counties that have taken the auditor, controller, the clerk, and the elections official, and combined those into one office. And again, some of those are big counties, some of those are small counties. There, there doesn't seem to be a real defining line. And then there is a whole nother piece of this, which you may or may not want to even talk about or touch, but that is the idea of whether you're a general law or a charter county. And there's 14 charter counties in California. And that gives you not just specific to this piece of organization, but it does give counties more opportunity to have a little bit more control over how you're organized and how you're structured. And there's some, you know, probably one of the biggest things is that you, not just auditor, controller, or tax collector, but the board could actually reduce the number of elected officials countywide. I think you have to have a sheriff, a deputy, or a district attorney, and an assessor. But beyond that, you would be able to, to create those department heads or put that together in a different way. That does require going to the voters and requesting a charter. But it is something, if you haven't looked at in the past, it may be worthwhile looking at as long as you're looking at the organization and the leadership within the county. And with that, I'm happy to answer what questions I have or take feedback, or if there's anything else, we can, we can add to the conversation or again, bring back to you for, for additional information.
Okay. Thank you, Tabitha. And if you're listening and you wish to comment on this, be sure to press star nine now so we know you're there. Board member Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, thank you. So I'm wondering if we have the availab, I know we have the availability, but are we going to be doing some polling to see how the constituents feel?
And I, I think that was certainly, if you give us direction to research this, that would be part of, of bringing back a request for some additional funds. I think we've estimated roughly $35,000 to do some initial research. But we would absolutely be looking at getting some outside consulting help with looking at polling and even considering how to phrase it and maybe even when to return it.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. And then my second question would be, because it says consolidation. And, you know, the, I like the office, the offices split. So is there a possibility to, even if we go away from an elected auditor, controller, and an elected tax collector, is there, because then you would have to have like a head and then two, two people under probably to run those departments. So I'm wondering, could it happen without splitting those offices?
You know what? I don't, I don't know. I think you would, you would certainly have to have, if you were going to have them on this, that you could certainly put them in the same work group. The question is making sure that we, if they're, if they're appointed or elected, looking at those options separately and making sure that we can do that. And then if they're elected, they still have certain independence that we, you would need to make sure that you didn't, you didn't go against. But that's certainly something we can look at. I do know if you create a Department of Finance, you can structure that. I do know if you create a Department of Finance, you can structure that. You would have a department, director of finance, department head, but there's no reason you wouldn't have sort of separate divisions underneath that. And that's pretty consistent with, with counties that have, have finance departments and even cities that this is a normal sort of structure within them, is that you have different, different divisions or branches depending on their specialty. And it also allows you to create what these two offices currently are trying to create, which is some sort of checks and balances over each other.
Yeah, I, I did. Thank you for that. I've, I've heard from quite a few of my constituents and the, you know, the checks and balance issue is a big one. And combining certainly could put some thoughts in people's minds that way. That, that's what I've heard anyways. And keeping the offices separate would maybe be more, settled more well with the constituent or voter base. Just some thoughts.
Yeah, I think, I think if you go down this route, there's lots of opportunity to look at the details as to how you structure it. And regardless of that, you're still always going to have a independent outside auditor looking at your, whether it's Department of Finance or it's the two separate departments, or however you structure it on an annual basis, that is going to let you know if you have issues with internal control or you have issues with not having adequate separation of duties.
Okay. And then I had two more comments, questions. So my second, or how many ever questions ago, would be, can, is it possible that the elected position could be a two-year term instead of a four-year term?
I have not looked at that. Do you know if we can limit the term?
I would have to look at the specific code sections pertaining to those two offices, but I believe they are set at four-year terms.
Okay. So would you, would you do that though and let me know? Thank you. And then the, the last comment I would like to make is, so during, if we like approve to just do this kind of in deep dive, then it would come back, would it come back with like, if it's an appointed, who, it would be this board appointing? Is that correct? Would that be the mindset?
That is, that is my assumption and the understanding. The only other option you would have is if you wanted your chief administrative officer to, to appoint that position. Otherwise, the assumption is it would be like your other appointed department heads.
So at that time then, if it became this board that appointed, then the link, could the language be, it's a four-fifths instead of a majority?
So I do know that Marin County had a combined question and they actually said it so that it, it required four-fifths of the board to terminate their appointed director of finance position. So yes.
So it could be four-fifths to appoint and four-fifths to terminate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
I'm kind of more interested in the charter county language. So there's a lot of flexibility in what you can do as a charter county. And so I would love to hear more about that. And, and it's not just term length. It's not, I mean, there are a lot of the things that we're confined by with relationship to the way we have our, you know, the format that we're constitutionally constructed with relationship to the county. Now, it would change a lot if we are able to create our own charter. I mean, even as much, we can even go so far as to modify how we do elections. We can do ranked choice voting. And there's other things. I mean, it's not, it's just, there's a whole lot of other opportunities for this county to self, to have a self-determination in, in, in a lot of these options. And so if we're going to talk about this as part of this process, I would certainly be very interested in hearing more about that. Not today necessarily, but I would, you know, bringing back a report on that would be interesting. I mean, I think, I think it's a good conversation for us to have for a county of this size. And I, and I do think that we should, in that conversation about appointed versus elected and in a lot of these positions, especially in the, well, you might consider professional rank or professional class positions, is our ability to, to recruit folks for those, for those jobs. You know, we don't limit ourselves in terms of our ability to recruit for our engineers and our other, you know, our medical professionals within the, within our appointments to just living in Humboldt County and wanting to go through an election. And so that is something we just maybe want to be cognizant of in this, in that discussion, in that analysis coming back from staff, is how are we limited in, in, when we're talking about things like, like an auditor position, you know, and any organization that's run half a million, half a billion dollars in this, you know, and, and then that we are, and that then seeks to have someone take on a position like that, doesn't normally limit itself to a population of 140,000 people from which to recruit from. And then from that population, then who's actually willing to go through a, you know, year-long interview process that we call elections? And so, and an expensive one at that. And so it definitely, it, it, it's not necessarily, it, it has its benefits certainly in terms of, you know, how the voters are able to and how citizens are able to interface with that. But it also has its limitations too. I think we should have some discussion about that and when, when staff comes back. Because I, I'm asking that, I mean, so right now, I'm favorable to the idea of having a report come back on, to some analysis on this.
Okay. And I've noted that. Thank you.
I will say Eureka is a charter city. I know that did add some flexibility after you, after we finally figured out what it really meant. Any other comments before we go to public comment? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I, I too would also favor coming back with more information about charter counties. Not just about this particular issue, but in general, for instance, the ranked choice voting opportunity, which is something that's pretty exciting to a lot of people who have read about it and understand it. But we can't do it unless we are a charter county. And I too have gotten lots of emails and phone calls from people that are concerned about checks and balances. And it might be nice to kind of lay out a clean pros and cons, you know, to the two different approaches because I've had some people argue that there would be better checks and balances to have, have an appointed position, that you're absolutely certain the person has the qualifications for the job. At least that's the perception that some have about that process. Whereas others, you know, feel very strongly that being elected office for checks and balances matter. And I think those are both emotional responses more than they are really looking at what are the pros and cons? And how do checks and balances work in appointed versus elected and those kinds of things? So a little bit more on that. And I know this isn't on the agenda, so I won't belabor it. But I do hope that staff will bring forward a, an agenda item for polling for a road measure. But it's not on the agenda, so I won't go any further into that. But we are talking about possibly doing some polling here. And it wasn't, but just a couple of months ago, we were talking about doing that for roads, but we haven't really brought that back yet. So I guess this is just a note to the CAO that it'd be nice to follow up on that. But it's off agenda, so I won't go any further. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Duly noted.
Thank you for your tolerance.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I am. I'm not as... Yeah, I did, I don't know what the, we lived through the cons for the last four years. So I just, I, I understand. And I think Supervisor Madron kind of gets it now because he said it'd be nice if, you know, it's a good way to find out if somebody's qualified. And, and, you know, I, I realize that there's, you know, there's only, the only three positions need to be according to the state constitution. But the one thing that shouldn't be political is our finances. We can be political in everything else, but our dollars and cents, and we talk about, you know, buying local, being local, taking care of our businesses, our one thing is paying our bills, paying our taxes, paying everything that didn't do. It's probably the one position that shouldn't be political. And I think we combined an office. It's kind of funny. I can, I can guarantee you, and I'm not speaking for him, but I can guarantee you, John Bartholomew would support this 110%, even though he came out against it before. He was for it and then he was against it. But I think he saw the ruins that we suffered. So, and I think, you know, in those positions, it's not a one-year interview process. It's usually a three-month dash to the finish. But we would be able to, to weigh everything and stuff like that. But if we had everything in front of us, it's not who's, you know, the shiniest or who's got the most. It's who's the most qualified. And when we're talking about our finances, we're still not out of the woods yet. We're still not out of the woods yet. I cannot get a, I don't think I can look at our CFO and say, can you give us a, an accurate tally of where we stand? And I don't think she can do that. And that's a tough position to be when you're in a half-billion-dollar corporation is what we are with 2,300 employees. That's not fair to our employees. It's not fair to our vendors. It's not fair to the people that vote for us and against us. So I think that's what we have to weigh in. I, I, I think this is a, a, a step in the right direction. It was very close last time. And I just, I think it might, and again, it's up to the people. They, they get to make that decision. But I, for myself, I think it would be a, a wonderful idea that we had qualified people with a knowledge to run a half-billion-dollar corporation rather than somebody that meets the bare minimum or not to run.
Supervisor Bushnell, and then I have a question.
Thank you. So I'm really interested in the polling because it really is up to the people. And along with the thought of making it an appointed or elected, is there a way to do? I know there is. I'm asking, can we add the department, or the charter county to that poll? And for me, before we go too much farther, I would really like, that's what I would really like, is to see how, how the people think before we go forward. And I don't know if that's a possibility or if you would need the motion the same, you know. Maybe you can respond to that, Tabitha.
So, so I think the, the two pieces here are, because I've gotten several directions and it's probably just making sure that the board is on the same page. I know that you're interested in looking at a charter county from the perspective of what opportunities that offers and flexibility. And I know you are looking at more the polling, which is sort of what, how does our, our, you know, constituents feel about not just the office of Department of Finance, but also a charter. And so the question for the, the board as a whole is, do you want us to look at both of those issues at the same time and bring it back? Or look initially at bringing back information on a charter and then do the polling? So that's, that's the piece I, timing wise, it seems like that's the issue.
Well, I have a question. I'm sorry. It goes along with what I just asked though. The charter thing, the charter county thing, I don't really understand. I haven't researched it. So I'm wondering, to become a charter county, does that also, that would also have to go in front of the voters? Is that correct? So it, for myself, it just makes sense that we would do that polling work to see if there is interest with the constituent base of Humboldt County. To me, that's where I would think it would need to go.
And so I was, I want to say a few things here. I would think before we want to poll anyone on a charter county, we need to educate the community what a charter county is. It'll be really confusing. So I'm not sure how we would do that, but I think it's, it's an important, it's, it's an important conversation if we really want to, if this moves forward in the future. So I think there are benefits, but I think the community needs to understand what exactly it would be. My question for you is, in regards to qualifications, I mean, it's been talked about a few different times. Even if we kept this elected, are there ways to beef up the qualifications for specific things? Or to, it, it just seems like, can we add what we'd like to see in qualifications? Or is that something that could be done under a charter city? I mean, because you have your ability to tailor your government more towards your needs.
And it is, it is in your ordinance codes as far as what the requirements for certain offices, specifically the auditor, controller are. So I think we could take a look at that. I don't know how far you could go as far as those requirements. And that would be something we'd have to, to bring back to after exploring what limitations there are. And obviously, if you have a charter, you have a little bit more ability to, to, to control that or put parameters on it. And I do think one of the challenges are, you can be more specific, but running for office is not necessarily going to be something that everybody who is an accountant wants to do. They don't, you know, accountants are not typically, and I say this for myself, are not necessarily the most outgoing political people. So you, you probably want to be careful about the, the extreme, you know, trying to really get a well-qualified candidate and somebody who can also be a politician.
I think I'd rather have the well-qualified, but I, I get what you're saying. It's, that's a, that's a tough mix. I'm just looking for it. I'm actually going to be on the other side of this podium by the time this all comes back and I'll be part of the public. So... Any other questions or comments before we go to public comment? Okay. If you're listening and you wish to comment on this, press star nine to raise your hands so we know that you are there. Is there anyone in the audience here who cared to comment or add any, well, any comments to this item? Not seeing anyone, so we will go to those on the phone. So the first one I see is 7454?
Yes, Mind of Chair, it's correct.
All right, 7454. Press star six then mute.
Well, I find this very interesting. I did not see the term charter city or charter county on the agenda. I don't think you can take any action regarding that as far as other than bring this back as another topic because I'm sure there's a lot of people that would have possibly considered participating had that been on the agenda. Same as the topic Steve Madron brought up, which he rightly pointed out, can't do anything about because it's not on the agenda. So strongly suggest you might firewall that at this time. I do have, have some major concerns. I did want to, I guess, Rick, I think we need to enter this in the record. I think Rick said 110% sure what John Bartholomew would do on this. But John's off on vacation and I spoke to John and I'm sure not going to bet exactly what John's going to say. Otherwise, John probably would have been participating in this meeting. I do have conversations with John directly. So, but will not speak for him. I, I had a little thing I sent to somebody and I'm going to just try and paraphrase or read a little bit. "It seems we are finally close to fixing this. Why take a chance on breaking it again? My investigation leads me to believe Team Tabitha, Cheryl, and Amy are working very well together. According to Jim Hussey in the AC's office, they currently have 17 of 19 positions filled with 18 of 19 within a couple of weeks. This is a very good sign." I think, I think Amy, according to the email I got from Amy here, has two, two positions vacant. And if I recall, the only open position that's left in the AC office is assistant AC, don't quote me on the last comment, is that I recall there is a county policy that encourages cross-training between departments. It makes sense that a possible 10% plus or minus pay increase for cross-training? Question mark. Those in the accounting field, that no matter what, the AC should always be elected to give some perception of checks and balances. And of course, I asked, what, what do Tabitha and Cheryl say? I'd like to hear what Cheryl has to say on this also. "I think a Department of Finance with a tax collector within, possibly not elected, may fly as long as the AC is still the elected. Check and balance in the process. I totally agree that more stringent qualification and further requirements to both, to both required departments to close out their books in a timely manner, in a timeline for the AC to provide the outside auditor the information to complete the single audit. And I ask for your thoughts." I also mentioned another person in here who I turned to is quite an expert in checks and balances. Won't mention him by name, but I suggested this person that I sent the email to contact them. In fact, we both do. So it's something that I, I wish to see your poll. I must hope it's not a push-pull poll, trying to determine something. And I also strongly support the comments that Michelle Bushnell's been making here. Having reached out to the constituents, some of you probably haven't, but for those of you have, I think you're going to find that it's quite consistent amongst the public, as was portrayed by Michelle, that we'd like to see those two positions remain elected. And definitely the AC position is thing. But go ahead and tighten it up. We don't, we don't have any problem with better qualifications.
All right, thank you. Can't... Sorry about that. We have another hand, 8015. Press star six then mute and you'll have three minutes.
Testing, testing?
Yes.
Testing, testing. Do you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. This is Thomas S. Harrington on behalf of the transparent Humboldt Coalition. Under no circumstances do our anti-corruption activists find any value in having the Board of Supervisors appoint or in any way interfere again with the duly elected of Supervisors appoint or in any way interfere again with the duly-elected office of Auditor Controller. The person who watches your money, my money, for me, is not to be in your hands, period. The problems that you laid out largely stem from toxic workplace environments perpetrated by frauds holding reins at the CAO's eyes. Our current system is broken because of the weakness of the office. The AC has been denigrated for the last 10 years. Weakening the office further is not the treatment for this problem. The Coalition strongly opposes any change, but certainly this action specifically, and we will campaign against it and anyone who supports it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Are there any other hands up? I'm not seeing any.
No, Madam Chair, there are no hands up.
All right, we'll go back to the board. And I did want to clarify with Tabitha, one of the speakers mentioned we can't, can't bring information on charter back, but that's part of the bigger conversation, isn't it, in this? We're just doing general direction today.
I would certainly defer to County Council, but I think you can, you can certainly have us return with additional information regarding how you want to organize these departments and how a charter would work into that. So yeah, I don't think you're going to give us any direction on trying to set it up or bring it forward or, but yes.
Just general, to me, it's, the hope was to get general information to be looked at in the, in the future months.
And I think that's how we perceive that.
All right, Supervisor Wilson?
I just, I just want to comment, we get very righteous about money, which is fine. It's, it, but, I mean, we also have professionals in our community that design our bridges, our roads, our schools, our medical professionals that we put our lives into every day. And we don't subject them to political processes in these ways necessarily. I just, it's just interesting to me that when we just talk about money, everyone gets a very, it's just a different perspective, and yet our lives and our, and our communities are impacted by all these other professions as well. And I want to make sure that we kind of put some perspective on that, that's all.
Thank you. Super.
Side note, the engineers, the doctors, our bridges getting built, don't get built without wishing, so we have to be careful about our monies. That's the only thing I'm saying, I don't, I don't go nuts over it. I'm just saying, it does drive the bus if we want to fix our roads. I mean, it was mentioned, it wasn't mentioned, but it was mentioned about a ballot measure, which is going to ask for more money. So I mean, that's, that's, that's a sad part of this whole thing about setting up here. We don't do anything unless we can finance it.
All right, so is there interest of, is there interest of making a general motion to ask staff to come back with what we've requested today as far as further information? I mean, what, what would be useful for you, Tabitha?
Basically, an idea of what you want us to bring back as far as information. And it sounds like County Council may, may weigh in, but you know, what I heard was you wanted additional information on looking at a charter, professional recruitment requirements, other options as far as how these things could be organized. And then secondarily, that at some point polling would be important in whatever direction you're looking at going. This is what I got, and the polling being separate.
Director, Director, sorry, I'm not sure if that was, if I upgraded you or not. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So you got, I was all good until the end. And so the polling being separate, how?
So I think, I think we want to refine what you want to poll before we go ask those questions.
Okay.
For example, the charter, deciding exactly if that's something you want to look at and what, what aspects of it. And even for me, I will tell you that I need more, I, I would need more information to educate you and to educate the public. So I think that's one of the pieces here before we go out. If you want to provide direction to start polling on the specific issue of a Department of Finance that would be appointed or elected, that, that we can take direction on that, or you can delay that until after you get additional information on the other options.
Well, I don't think if we're going to bring back information on a charter county, I think that's a key part of what you would poll about. So I think that would be like putting the horse before the cart, kind of. Can you read the first set of things you said again, please?
I can, because they're rough notes, so this is not word for word. So, so what I had was looking at professional recruitment, looking at additional options as far as what, what your qualifications for those office, offices could be, looking at the, the aspect of other ways to potentially go about structuring a finance department. I know checks and balances, and I think pros and cons was actually the specific words that were used as far as that piece of it. And, and then the question being where we put the polling in is really what I, I don't know that I have a direct understanding of.
So could I ask that, with that direction, with what kind of a budget, would we need to put a budget, some kind of money in there to do all that?
We, we could, and one of the, and, and we had estimated this, this very specific topic at about $35,000. The one thing I would just kind of throw out there that you may want to consider is if there are going to be additional items that we're talking about placing on the ballot in 2024, and the road tax was one of the things, whether or not we would want to bring that, we would want to do that as a whole, as a part, as opposed to piecemealing it. And I, and I don't have the answer for that, but that is a question.
Yeah, I just have a, fundamentally, this is up to the voters, and so I have a problem with going forward and doing all, and I understand educating the public, but you know, it seems like we should, for myself, find out if this is what the constituents of Humboldt County are even thinking about, because it's not ultimately up to us, it's up to the voters. And how we structure it, I get, is up to us, and put it, and, and how we present it to the public, it just, I mean, am I totally off-base here?
I, I would just say, I think you have to be really specific on what you're, what you're polling. You've got to have a better idea, but I do have CAO Hayes who can answer that better, and then after Supervisor Bushnell, I have Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, this conversation today has been very helpful for staff to know what kind of questions your board might have, and whether or not, really today, the question is, is there even interest in furthering this conversation? And do you value allocating staff resources to further investigating this? And so dependent upon that vote, if that vote is yes, then we will return with answers to all of these questions that have come up today. Placing a ballot measure on, on the ballot is a multi-step process. So we'll be talking about this many more times if your board does give us direction to proceed forward. And we have used Lou Edwards for all of our polling in the past to Supervisor Bushnell's comments, and they're very well-versed on, on how to vet the information in a way that is reliable and responsible, and you know, you, that can then be used as an education component for both your board and the public down the line. So we'll certainly have many conversations with them if your board gives us direction to proceed on how that polling should be structured, what kind of questions. We'll provide them with the feedback that has come from your board. So we'll use all of that information to structure that.
Do you go, Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Wilson?
I'm, I'm just, on the question of polling, it's just a tool, and also, it does, I mean, I appreciate, I think where Supervisor Bushnell is going with that, which is like, if you have a poll that shows you that there's zero interest, and people are adamant about moving in one direction or another, then that might be helpful. But in general, unless you have some information to, that is out in the, in the public to talk about, and again, polling, when you're talking about these issues, generally speaking, it's about, they're like educational, so it's just a very different, it's just a very different tool. And they don't necessarily depict where things will go at the end of a, of an election cycle. I think, I think waiting on a poll until we get more discussion is something I would be interested in doing. I like, I like it when we do our polling, and I like the information we get, but it's, we can only use it so, so much. I mean, it has only so much value in these, these processes.
Okay, before I go to Supervisor Bone, I just want to say, the question, what I've heard from staff is, is there interest in furthering the conversation? I think I'm hearing interest in furthering a conversation from this board today that would come back, doesn't necessarily have to come back refined on specific points at this time, or, I'm thinking more general, because this is going to be a several-month process, if it does at all, but that's just my thought. Supervisor Bone?
And I don't know if we do it before, after, I'm not exactly sure when you want to do the polling, but I will, I will benefit. I've had to eat crow twice with the polling results from Lou Edwards, that I said there was no way in hell, and they were spot-on, spot-on with Measure Z, the one that sticks out in my mind that we, that we didn't sunset it. And I thought for sure, and it was, they, they were within a percent. And I mean, I think, I think the delivery and, and the thing is, is you always, it's a push-pull. Well, you can make a poll with any number you want, but it's the end of the day when you count the votes and the results, it counts how accurate the poll is, and they've been very accurate. And so it's a, as, as Mike said very eloquently, it's a tool, but as in any tool, it's got to be in the right person's hands, and they seem to do a pretty good job with it.
All right, so, is there interest in someone making a motion that we have staff bring this back at a future date with further conversation points?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, and Tabitha, is that enough for you?
Yes.
Or CAO Hayes, whichever. All right. And no specific time on when that comes back? Is that your discretion of after you gather information?
Okay.
All right. All right, can we have a?
Madam Chair, can I get clarification? So we're just, we're just approving staff recommendations.
Right, okay.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Do you do that a lot? I think we're ready. Did mine come up? Mine did.
Did everybody's come up? Not your Supervisor Wilson still?
His came up? Oh, sweet. It's it? Sorry about that. Didn't all work?
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
Yay. Okay, I'm asking to take a brief break until 10:30. 10:30, be back in the room, please. I believe we're back. Our next item I brought forward, and it's actually regarding CMSP and County Medical Services Program, and it's a process that we go to. We do have one applicant that was Oscar Vegas, Supervisor Vegas from Yolo County, who by the way, has some roots in Humboldt County. So I think, I'll go to Supervisor Bone, he looks like he is interested in commenting or making a motion.
I'd like to support Oscar Vegas, because I, I'm not sure if, if we have any members in, are we, do we have any CMSP clients? I'm looking at Connie Beck. We were down to two at one time.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, I, I serve on the CMSP board for the CAOs, and we do, it, it had, there has been times where we've only had one or two clients on it, but enrollment is up a little bit from that. It's not overly popular, but I think, I think it's around 12 to 10 to 15 enrollees, if, if I recall correctly.
And Oscar Vegas has served us well, and he's easily, he's easily attainable, and he's got access to the capital a lot easier than we do.
That's true.
All right, so I think there was a motion in there? Is there a motion? Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, that was a.
I'll say it.
So, is there anyone with their hands up online? Not seeing Nikki. Okay, well, no one's online, so we'll go back in the room here. Is anyone interested in commenting on this item on the CMSP County Medical Services Board? All right, seeing none, I think we're probably ready to vote on this one. Yay, my tab showed up twice. All right, passed five zero. Next, we're going to move on to the next item brought by Supervisor, which is to consider creating a full-time community grant coordinator, and Supervisor Bushnell brought this item, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I would like to ask Scott O'Dare to come to, up to the table. Be good. So I, I brought this item to have a discussion with this board. Throughout the last six months, I have been hearing a lot of community concerns, and you know, financially, some of the, most of the unincorporated areas are suffering a little bit, and I, through talks with nonprofits and other organizations, there's a lot of grant monies that are available, but they don't have the, the person to write the grant or obtain those funds. So I just wanted to have a discussion with my board and see what it looks, what it could look like. I've asked Scott to give us some, some examples of what kind of grants would be out there, and also just, you know, singing trees could have benefited for a grant writer, and maybe they would have been able to stay open had they had that option. They didn't have someone that could grant write for them, and it, you know, they didn't know where to start. Additionally, in the southern Humboldt area, through the transition of, you know, the cannabis crash and trying to figure out what we're doing, how we're going to help that community, it's became a very apparent to me, not only in the southern Humboldt area, that there are a lot of grants that could be helping those unincorporated areas of Humboldt County.
All right, welcome, Scott.
Good morning. So economic development entails and requires a great deal of community outreach and public engagement. And this last year, our agency has facilitated eight town hall meetings throughout the community and throughout various parts of Humboldt County, and has participated in probably a dozen other community events, not as a facilitator, but as a participant. At those meetings and town hall discussions and community events, we have solicited feedback from residents and community partners about what it is that they're looking from their county government to assist with and promote livelihoods in their neighborhoods and in the community. And something that we've heard frequently on many occasions is a need for grant support. Many organizations or groups, especially in the remote or far-reaching communities throughout the county, are volunteer-based organizations, don't have paid staff, and they may lack the skills or education or knowledge to even find grants or write grants. Some of these organizations are actually paying consultants, sometimes as much as $10,000 or more to write grants for them. And it's difficult for them to find the funding to even afford that expense. Most of the feedback that we're receiving is for a need for assistance with implementing projects, not so much planning projects. So grant funding for programmatic or project implementation, or to fund staff for these agencies who don't have paid staff. And you know, we as an organization, we have grant writers internally in the county, but typically, we're writing grants to our list of priorities, to initiatives or programs or projects that have already been either established or where there's been direction from the Board of Supervisors to focus on grant activity. So that's in a, in a nutshell, what I, I can share, if that's helpful, is that we're just seeing some need in the community, that community groups, they often come to their county first, to their local government first, when they're looking for aid, and these groups are looking for some externally facing public grant support or assistance.
Thank you, Scott. So I, I would like to have, I would like support from this board for staff to investigate where this, where this, if we were to do this, where this person would be housed, what it would cost. There is, you know, most grants have admin fees built into them, so that you can, the grant writer can get paid, but to have, I would like support from this board to ask staff to come back with some criteria to see what it would look like for a community grant writer, and, and for examples of, to come back with, you know, we all know and hear of grants that are out there that communities can really benefit from, and so I, I welcome the discussion from this board around this topic.
And I just had a question for Scott, and this is somewhat different, but CSAC also has their grants initiative now, and I'm, I don't know, I don't know if any of those are, you know, aimed to help community partners or not, but.
There, there are agencies within our community who do offer some level of grant writing support or, or grant coordination. Some of those agencies, depending on what their mission is, might have a specific focus, either a target audience or group that they want to or prefer to write grants to, or perhaps target activities that they want to write grants to. I think part of an, of an assessment or analysis of this role should include the capabilities of other organizations in the community, and what they can and cannot offer grant writing support for, but the, the grant requests that we're getting through our agency is very broad, and it's coming from public sector, private sector, community-based organizations, businesses, for, for a wide variety of different types of, of projects and initiatives.
Okay. I know Supervisor Madron has mentioned a grants position before, is this something along the summer line? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm asking you a question, or is this, was this something that would be, you would consider helpful to?
I'm always supportive of expert grant writers, and I say expert, because, you know, grant writing is an interesting field, and I have seen many cases with many organizations where they will chase every single grant that comes down the line, and they end up with like a 20% success rate. Grant writing is not a shotgun sport, it is a target. You know, you have to be very targeted about what you do, and so, you know, a couple of years ago, Supervisor Wilson and I supported two new positions in Public Works to be grant writers slash project managers, and I know that Public Works has made very good use of those positions. And as you said Supervisor Bushnell, more often than not, a good grant writer not only pays their own salary, but they bring in millions of dollars of other money that support other jobs and other assistance to community groups and other things. So I'm absolutely supporting of this. I mean, I, I would support new grant positions in every department across the board, every day it came before us. I do think it would also be a really interesting thing to have sort of a, you know, a grant writing manager, that departments might, you know, be able to also access on some level, because if we have everybody just kind of running around, and we're not talking to each other, or really communicating as a county, cross-department, I think we miss opportunities, and we cross wires, and we waste a lot of time. So for up to me, I'd probably create a grant writing czar position of some kind, along with numerous other grant writing positions in, in any department that felt they needed, because I've always felt that it pays for itself. But it is a matter of being focused, and, you know, you can have this large menu of all the things you'd like to do. The real question for the grant writer is, which of these 50 items that I have, or 50 opportunities that I have, rise to the top as ripe fruit? You know, low-hanging fruit that if we put some time into it, it's highly likely that it comes back. So how do you, how do you determine that? You know, one way is to have some sort of performance measures. I mean, if a grant writer is only getting 50% of less or less of what they do, they're not focused, they're not paying attention to the basic rules of grant writing. So there are some concerns that I have about how we approach that, but I absolutely support this item on the agenda, and the idea of getting more grant writers.
Thank you. I, I wanted to say that having staff come back would be how that, you know, we would need to identify how we would, you know, first come, first serve, or how we would manage that criteria, and that was in the staff, I made sure to add that in the staff report as well, because it does, you know, can create some problems. I wanted to say that also, you know, I'm not interested in this position anyways, is having this person manage grants, because that would take up all their time. So it would be like an application, start to finish, submit, and then have the organizations or groups. I would be a little concerned if we had this person working for county grants, because that could take up a lot of time and maybe take away from the community, but I, like you, think that we are missing opportunities in departments that need additional grant writers as well.
Thank you. And I had Supervisor Wilson, were you interested in hearing from Hank Siemens since he's on? And then Supervisor Bone, did you want to say something? I saw you move towards a mic, so we'll do Wilson first, and you can.
Yeah, thanks. I want to go back to what Supervisor Madron said. We advocated for some grant writing and management, and I will say, I understand the idea about grant writing in and of itself, but unless the organization has capacity to administer the grant, it's, it, it doesn't help in the future with your, with your ability to get more grants from an organization, and so it is really imperative that, that happens, and that there is follow-through, if we're, if we're going to be investing in this sort of thing, and so, but also the focus, again, I align myself with Supervisor Madron in support of the idea that there's a need for this sort of community development work, but it's hard to know whether it's, which programmatic element are we trying to address? Are we trying to address community development as in and of itself, infrastructure issues or projects, whether they be smaller or bigger, associated with communities needing to do this, or is it just staffing level of, of local nonprofits? And we do have a nonprofit network that, that, there is a nonprofit network that helps in these things. We do have Humboldt Area Foundation, we have RCAA, we do have local nonprofit organizations that can provide a lot of that support, and I think it's part of a report that we get back from staff, that would be something I would want to know, that we're not reinventing a wheel of sorts, that we're, you know, that, that maybe we can, through our own budgeting, provide, contract out some of that work, and just like we do with a lot of our planning work, like we do with other things, we contract that out, and I'm not, I would want to know if that's something we want to do in-house, or maybe we start by contracting out and see what the success of that is before we create a new position in-house, especially if there's not a lot of strategy with relationship to where that position sits, and, because we don't really have a community development department per se. We have Economic Development Department, which kind of is our community development department a little bit, you know, and to some degree. So those are, those are some thoughts with it, but I did ask Hank to check in, if he's available on, on the Zoom, to sort of give us an update of our last effort on this, and what, what that's produced for us, and kind of give us a little summary. So if Hank's available to do that, that'd be great.
All right, yeah. Hank, I see you on there. Did you want to make a comment? But in the meantime, while you're turning on your microphone, actually, is his microphone on? Okay, actually, let's let Hank speak, sorry, and then Supervisor Bone.
Good morning. Hank Siemens, Public Works Deputy Director. I can just share a few observations, you know, based on our experience, number one, as a grant recipient, but then also our role with North Coast Resource Partnership, the seven county region where we serve as a grant administrator, and we help direct state allocated funds to, you know, small districts and cities, and nonprofit organizations to do grant work. And I think one observation is just that writing a grant application is a small part of the full life cycle of a grant, and, you know, often you need supporting information to justify the need and the solution and the strategy for the grant, you know, could be an engineering study. And then, as Supervisor Wilson mentioned, you need the capacity to the invoicing and the reporting, and then deliver on the substance of the grant. And sometimes the costs of developing application are reimbursable, but I would say, most oftenly, in our experience, those costs are not reimbursable, but often the administration of the grant can be reimbursable, but usually the application costs are of a sunk cost. You know, in terms of our department and how we approach grants, you know, we integrate the grant writing in terms of the full project delivery process, and so, you know, we need to have the capacity to be able to bring the funds in, but then deliver the project, and that's where we integrate with our different divisions. So, you know, each department is going to have its own limiting factors in terms of, you know, what it would need to expand its, its grant work, but I agree with the, the point of perhaps focusing in on what areas of community development the board would like to make this investment, and then, you know, then we can try to help strategize to make it most effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Supervisor Bone, and then Madron, and then Bushnell.
It sounds like if we go right, we're going to have to hire about 30 grant writers for all the departments, and a czar and everything else, but along the, and I know, having a nonprofit for 31 years, I know that it's a lot of work, and you have to find people, beg them, ask them, they'll run it, and then you've got to oversee it, and you've got to send the reports back. But it seems like this is almost right down the alley of what the Humboldt Area Foundation was formed for, and what they used to do in the old days. I mean, they've changed their focus a little bit, but they're sitting on a few hundred, a couple hundred million dollars, and they are a community betterment, according to reading their mission statement of what they want to do, make for a better community, and the best way to do that was, is work with the county, and to help these smaller nonprofits. I, I have, I have gotten two, two grants from Humboldt Area Foundation, and probably 30 other foundations over the last 30 years, but it sounds like this is right up our alley, and it almost sounds a little bit out of our wheelhouse, because I don't know where we'd pull it, and, and I think Supervisor Wilson or Madron mentioned, which small profit do we support, which one? Then we've got somebody actually deciding, okay, we're going to work on your grant, we're not going to work on your grant, we're going to work on your grant, and there are more nonprofits in our little area than anywhere else in California. So how many, so how many people, how many are we going to have to keep adding staff? I just think the Humboldt Area Foundation is built for this, I think we could certainly assist them, I think it's a great idea, I appreciate Supervisor Bushnell bringing this forward, because it is something that will help our community in a lot of ways, but in which ways, and, and how far do we take it? Because it, it could grow into, and it's been really, you know, grants have been really successful the last four or five years, but with the state having a $25 billion deficit next year, I don't know if those monies are going to be as quick-flowing during a potential recession, so I just don't know how much we ramp up and go for it.
So I have Supervisors Madron and Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, you're absolutely right Supervisor Bone, you know, who decides who gets the assistance? That can always be a super complicated thing. I appreciate Director, Deputy Director Siemens bringing up the North Coast Resource Partnership. It's a seven-county collaboration that Supervisor Bone and I sit on with Supervisor Wilson as an alternate, but they have an amazing innovative program of technical assistance. So as you can imagine, with seven counties, some of us have really high capacity to write grants and compete, Humboldt's one of those, along with Sonoma County, whereas some of the counties, Siskiyou, Modoc, they have a much harder time engaging in that world of grant writing and, and being competitive. It's not just getting a grant in, but it's actually getting the grant funded, right? So I would say, looking at that program, which the county, Humboldt County runs this program for, for the seven counties, we have incredible staff under Hank, Sabell Emmett, and so many other wonderful staff that do an amazing job of administering, you know, millions and millions of dollars in these programs, but the technical assistance component is really unique in that it's designed to provide tribes and counties with direct technical assistance, and watershed groups in those counties and others, to, to be able to understand how to put a grant together, how to be competitive, and how to make it happen. And they basically provide that on a competitive basis to people who submit a request for assistance, for technical assistance. So that kind of helps with the fairness issue, I guess. It's open to everybody, but it is competitive, because there's always limited resources, right? So that's certainly a program that I think would be worth looking at, in terms of how we might design something. And also Supervisor Bone brought up Humboldt Area Foundation, and Supervisor Bushnell did, I think, as well, but they have the Rooney Center there, which is an amazing resource to nonprofits and others to come in, and they just have a whole basic library on all the various grant programs and grant assistance, and they have staff that will come and sit with you and help you navigate and understand. You know, at the end of the day, no matter how much assistance you get, it really does come back down on the staffing of that organization to make it happen, and as Deputy Director Siemens said, often that work goes unreimbursed. Well, when you get really good at this grant writing stuff, the final report on the project you're wrapping up, with its recommendations, looks an awful lot like Phase Two proposal, right? So if you get really good at these things, because rarely is it a one-grant-fix-all type of thing, more often than not, you're dealing with phases of making improvements. And so when you get really good at it, you can actually get a fair amount of your proposal development work covered through the final reporting process and things like that. So they're little, little tricks of the trade that, that go a long way. Another one is the Trees Foundation, another great example of a nonprofit in the community who basically provides all kinds of technical assistance, as well as administrative sponsoring of a proposal for groups that are new. They might have their nonprofit status, but they're really new at what they're doing. And so Trees Foundation has been sponsoring, you know, hundreds of different groups over the last 20, 30 years, in terms of their grant writing and other assistance. So good to look at all these things, but, you know, I know we're going to start out small, maybe just one position, and make that work. I look forward to the discussion, coming back to us, to kind of pin down what it might look like, where it might sit, and how it might function. So, thank you.
If I may, I would recommend that perhaps the various departments or agencies within the county who are doing grant writing now, come together and that this be some level of a collaborative discussion. Prior to the pandemic, your board directed the formation of a task force for department heads to meet together to discuss grants and grant activity related to infrastructure, more specifically, which was the Ready Task Force. However, that group, really during the pandemic, was not able to meet, and we haven't convened since. I think that if we're able to bring some of the agencies together, have this discussion, and then do a needs assessment internally, and also look at the capabilities that exist already in the community, might give us a better understanding as to where the gaps are. We have referred a number of community groups and agencies to Humboldt Area Foundation, and they do offer grant support and assistance, but I believe it's primarily just for nonprofit entities. We receive a lot of private sector requests for grants too, dairy farmers who, who want help with grants, or other private sector businesses who need help with grants, and, and I think there's a gap that does exist in that granting market for some of the private sector, or other community organizations, but there's certainly a lot of support for nonprofits looking for, for grant assistance.
I have Supervisor Bushnell, and then I have a question for Scott.
Thank you. Thanks to my board for the great discussion. I wanted to say exactly what Scott just said, that yes, there is lots of assistance for nonprofits, most of those, such as Humboldt Area Foundation is very specific, Trees Foundation as well, very specific to nature for a grant. I, I, my thoughts around this item, and I think we've covered it, and I think Scott just hit it, is that there are private sector businesses that are failing widely, and that could get assistance through grants, and absolutely, I thank you to Hank for his And absolutely, I thank you to Hank for his statement. We would need to find out, and this is why I wanted staff to come back. We don't want someone to spend time and effort on a grant that the follow-through isn't going to be done or the grant is not going to be managed. So that would be a criteria, I would imagine, that staff would come back with some type of a criteria. If I could ask Scott, what would a motion look like? Just to have you collaborate with other departments and to come back to our board to report around grants?
Yeah, I think today really what we're just doing is elevating a need or we've identified a gap that exists. So I would recommend that staff go back, do an analysis and come back with some of those details. I see, CEO Hayes, do you have, were you raising your hand?
I think she was scratching.
I was scratching her wrist. Yeah. Thank you, though. So if I could, you know, I would like for staff to come back with, you know, where it could be housed or if we would do it out of, you know, maybe just out of house and to interact with other departments to see where their needs are and, you know, see how we would, criteria for how we would choose who would be acceptable to receive grant, the grant help or grant writing help, so forth and so on. I think with the discussion that you've had here, you kind of have direction.
So that was, I think that was kind of a motion, a motion to come back and through the discussion.
What staff, though? What staff would we like? Would it be the CAO's office?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
And you may have said this, Scott, I'm trying to keep track of who's on where. Would special districts or other agencies, yes, that was in there, I didn't know, I wanted to just make sure because I was hearing nonprofits and I just.
So in the staff report, I put local government, local private sector government, and that would cover special districts and those types of nature's fire departments and.
Okay, like, I think when you said private sector government, that kind of, my brain kind of went, what?
So I wanted it to not be county government specific. So that's, I didn't know how to word it well in the staff.
That's okay.
We can do that and come back. And I think to Supervisor Madron's point about grant management, I don't know that necessarily Supervisor Madron was just focusing on this individual managing grants, but management as a whole, more like grant coordination throughout the county agencies. We're aware and we've talked with their department heads that sometimes even our own county agencies have competed for the same grants, not knowing that we're competing for some of the same grant opportunities. So I think that this individual that you're talking about, we might want to infuse that into part of the scope as some sort of collaboration or grant coordination with the other entities in the county who are writing grants. And we can, I know, direct staff, I'm not sure if this is directed at the CAO's office or which staff's being directed, but we could certainly bring to any of the department heads who want to have this discussion, the names of the groups and the real entities who've reached out to us and asked for grant support or assistance so that they can see the type of activity that exists in the community and we can share that.
So would you like to make your motion again, just to make sure?
Sure, but I do want to make, if I could just make one other comment, what I've heard through some of the organizations are, like the grant writer that came to public, that Public Works has, they end up managing the grants as well. And so then they're not able to concentrate on the grant process. And so I think that we, as an organization as well, are losing lots of opportunities because now you have that grant writer person that is managing that grant. And so they're not, they're so busy managing the grant that they're not actively seeking or able to work as diligently on new processes. And that, I've heard that across the organization with the grants that we have received so far. So, you know, when we're having staff look into this, I think that needs to be considered too, that the management of those grants that we receive are cumbersome and they do somehow not allow for that grant writer to then continue writing grants. So I would like to make a motion for staff recommendations to come back with some thoughts and ideas and to wrap that around our other departments in the organization as well.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right.
And I have a comment.
Supervisor Wilson.
A couple of things. One is when Supervisor Madron and I were asking for capacity within Public Works with relationship to grants, I mean, what happened was is the gap really wasn't in the ability to do more grants, the gap at that time, and I still think it was to manage. So there still already is, we already still have capacity issues in the grants we have now in all our departments. So it does exist. We're not, we're not, we don't have like an overabundance of workforce to manage the grants that we do have. And so I think that's something that we have to still keep cognizant of. When we're talking about the, when you're saying the private sector, you're talking about CSDs and, I mean, what can, that also confuses me because that's not what I think about. They are not private sectors.
She said private, I think, yeah.
Can you explain?
Non-county government.
Non-county government, so other small governments?
Yes. Fire departments and CSDs are small government, non-county. I struggled with the wording as you're obviously confused about it, but I just wanted the thoughts to go to.
It's okay, I was, I don't mean to interrupt, I just need clarification because, because I was like, well, if we're doing, you know, private sector support, fine, that's good. I mean, I wouldn't mind that, but it would just be very specific and we could do that. But I would be something I wanted to like work with our REDEC or something to coordinate with. But if we're talking about, if we're talking about small district support, that's a whole, and.
I think, Mike, it's not just small district supporter, non, it is private sector as well. And that, the conversation, I want staff to come back with those ideas. In my district, mostly largely unincorporated, well, the two cities that Fortuna and Rialto have someone that does grants for them, they've benefit greatly. Rialto is a prime example of an incorporated town that was struggling financially, that utilized lots of grants to better their town. Unincorporated areas aren't so lucky and the rest of my Southern Humboldt area besides those two are struggling. And as well, groups, private entities, CSDs, fire departments, don't have the capability or the monies to write those grants. And so my thoughts around this, so Scott and Alicia and a lot of department heads attended a meeting in Southern Humboldt on Friday evening. It was a tourism meeting, but the conversation went around, you know, the struggles of the community as well. And the struggles not only with the Southern Humboldt community, but Supervisor Madron's unincorporated area. And one thing that came up a lot was the availability to, they've identified grants, they have possibly the management portion down, but writing the grants is very specific also and gathering that knowledge. And so we heard that over and over again on Friday evening, you know, at this forum that we, that we all, that's county staff attended and myself. And so, you know, the thought is not just around one specific idea of CSDs or, you know, but for, also for private, if, you know, businesses. Businesses are failing everywhere right now in Humboldt County.
Yeah, I get that. I'm going to say that this is beyond one FTE. I mean, what we're talking about is, you know, one person could almost run around and manage to coordinate and associate and get people moving in the right direction here and there. That one person can also write all the grants. Just, that's just that, that person would have to have staff or availability of staff or some resources if actual grant writing was going to be what is done. Because the work of just prioritizing and coordinating through all of these, all of these things, it would be a full-time job in and of itself. So I just want to be realistic about that part of it and have that be part of the conversation coming back.
We can look for and bring back examples if there are community grant writers that are more public, external-facing in other communities and see what those job descriptions look like. You mentioned REDEC, we've actually been in conversations over the last few months with REDEC and AEDC about are there ways multiple agencies could partner to fund a grant position, who could then write grants or support the community? So I think we've identified the concern and the need and we now need to come back to your board with some, you know, better answers as to maybe how it could be structured or what it would look like. And it's going to entail, I think, collaboration with, you know, Hank and John, you know, all the other departments, but also maybe reaching out to those other experts in the community like HAF and others to bring some ideas back to your board.
Okay, well, we do have some hands up if that's all right to go to public comment and we will come back. Look, I'm going to go to those on the phone first. And our first speaker is 7454.
As the board's aware, I'm making selective comments not on every single topic today. That's probably appreciated, but this is a very important one. I appreciate Michelle bringing this forward. I know Supervisor Madron ran two successful campaigns for supervisors based a lot upon his skill set in this particular thing and bringing it forward. It sounded like we've got at least three votes to do something here. This is a fatal flaw with the US government. And I support what Rex said, 30. I think you may go ahead and have your Department of Finance also have an offshoot there, which would be your Department for Grant Writing and Managing These Grants. I don't think you need 30 people in here if you're going to actually do some good here. You probably need closer to 50 or 100 people in this department both to write and manage the grant. This is the fatal flaw of the US government. Our money is taken from us through sales tax, property tax, excise taxes, every single tax. And then we have to go writing grants to be begging for scraps from the table. And it's very difficult being a small county as we're all painfully aware. And I've never heard of anybody writing any grants in what is perceived to be the more successful dominating country known as China. I think they've eliminated those kind of things from their process. If they haven't, I haven't at least heard about it. So I strongly support moving forward and I think this is money very well spent. And I think the returns are going to be 10 to 1 if it's managed correctly and properly. And so I hopefully will move forward with this and take some time, set up something that benefits not just the county, not just the municipalities, not just the districts, but also the individuals who are out there like the ranchers, where I think were example dairy farmers. So very strong support from the public on this particular topic. I do wish to mention that unfortunately Humboldt Area Foundation is perceived to have been not fulfilling its charter in many ways. And I know a lot of people are pulling their endowments out and managing themselves or going to other things. So I doubt whether you can really count on this, especially if they're only writing it for these special purposes. I ran into one of these endowments a year ago and it was supposed to be for cats and the cat shelter was having a hell of a time proring money out of Redwood Area Foundation. At that time, I lost quite a bit of faith in the current management and not following their charters. Thank you opportunity to speak on this very important topic.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. Our next speaker is 2223.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, this is Craig Johnson. And really good topic. I really appreciate Supervisor Bushnell bringing this forward. I just want to offer a little perspective from where I stand. And I'm on a road association, I'm on a fire supportive association, a community fire association, I'm a landowner and a business owner. So if I was to move out from that, and priority would be our private lands, our cannabis business, us being equity operators, our road association, our community fire, our friends of the fire and road associations, and then we go out to county roads, et cetera, et cetera. And I really appreciate what all the members of the board are bringing forward. This is like, at the moment, this highly functioning board and it's amazing to witness and watch you guys talk about this because there's so much perspective. I think it definitely needs to be brought back and more conversation around it. And I agree with the last caller, we're in a position where our money is taken from us and then we have to ask for it back. One thing with these grants, what I've witnessed as well is there's usually space for administrative budget built right into them. So I don't think this would take away money and it would only be a supporting asset for the county. Maybe we do want to start with like a Trees Foundation. Trees Foundation is amazing. They're currently supporting our community with mapping and holding space for even our community fire meetings. Fantastic. And I just want to loop back one more time and say, I feel if this was managed right, it would fund itself. And I think it's going to take more than one person, but I think before the county brings it on to their own budget, I think we could look at maybe supporting some of these nonprofits to manage this space. Thank you so much and I appreciate the time put forth in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next, we have 7429. Press star six and mute.
Good morning Supervisors, this is Ruby Tenorio. I'm so glad you're having this discussion and I very much appreciate Supervisor Bushnell bringing this to your board. In Southern Humboldt, as Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, we just had a very robust forum that highlighted the need for grant writing expertise to help us access so much needed assistance in implementing projects and funding staff. And fortunately Supervisor Bushnell was way ahead of us and saw the need and how beneficial this position, our positions would be for the unincorporated areas and our struggling small towns and the small groups that, without grant writing expertise, that could really use its help. And I think this position could and would benefit the whole county. I also appreciate Supervisors Madron and Wilson's expertise in this field and I know that they can and I'm confident that they can offer invaluable advice and guidance on how to structure the position. I understand that it may be challenging to narrow it down and to focus it and get it going and implement it, but I think it's very much worth investigating and figuring it out. And thank you for the discussion and thank you to Supervisor Bushnell for bringing it forward to your board.
All right, thank you, Ruby. And then we have 9334.
Do we get through?
Welcome.
Hello?
Hello.
Dennis, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, very good. Dennis Mayo here. I appreciate this conversation as well and I wanted to make sure that it's looked at even in more parameter perhaps than you're even thinking. I appreciate rural area being mentioned, special districts. One of the problems that very high-functioning special districts have is that they have the ability, as MCSD does, to generally write our grants, manage our grants. But we're required on many types of grants to have to partner with the county or a city, et cetera. And that's something that becomes very problematic and has been problematic. We've been working on remedies to this for a long time. My point being is that I would like to request that you specifically invite MCSD and any other large special district you think relevant to be part of this discussion ongoing. We don't want to come into these discussions at the end and, oh, this is decided and that's decided. We have really good participation. You want us in these groups. So thank you and I appreciate looking at this issue.
All right, thank you, Dennis. And now we'll go to those who are here in person who want to speak on this item, please come forward and you'll have three minutes. And welcome.
Bob Weiner here from Southern Humboldt. I appreciate Michelle bringing this forward to the board. As it says, a community grant coordinator, and that's what we really need down, not only in Southern Humboldt, but for the whole county. And I got fidgety when Supervisor Madron and Wilson were talking all about county grants, nonprofit grants. Those are all fine and well and you can, you know, make those positions also, but this. this specifically goes to help the community. And there's, I've been to the foundations up here and they generally won't talk to you unless you are a nonprofit. And there's, that's the big conundrum here and I would appreciate if, you know, you could just at least make a motion to, you know, support this and, uh, investigate further, you know, as specifically as a help to the public sector. Now, and there's all kinds of ways that you can actually, you know, control the administration, you know, and that could be written into, you know, the grant process also. So I appreciate it and thank you, Michelle, for bringing it to our community.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wish to comment on this item? Welcome, Janelle.
Thank you. I also want to thank Supervisor Michelle for bringing this forward. I didn't understand what it was about. Um, I thought in, because I'm dealing with, um, grants and things through the DHHS and it's a whole nother thing and I'd be happy to talk to you about that. I had very, have some concerns about that. But hearing about what this is about, um, I absolutely support it, um, that, um, the rural areas, um, have difficulties, both locally and nationally. And, um, to help those rural areas and those small, uh, governmental, non-governmental, I don't know how, you know, how, what do you call them? Um, I, thank you.
All right, thank you, Janelle. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll go back to the board. I believe we have a motion and a second and Supervisor Madrone, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the comment about the needs, that it is really the community sector that is probably the biggest gap, you know, and the biggest need. One of the things about grants is that they can't go to for-profit businesses. They can only go to nonprofits, government, or tribes typically. It's really rare. There are occasions where grant money can go to directly to a for-profit business, but it's extremely rare. So more often than not, in order to help the private sector, you've got to be partnering with the nonprofit sector or with government, because that's the way the grant money's flow. But in that process, it's important to recognize that the community sector, the business sector is really hurting on many, many levels. Um, you know, as we've been bringing these grants forward for the cannabis industry for water storage, for instance, there have been many other farmers, uh, you know, food farmers that are saying, where do I sign up for a grant for water storage? I'm growing food, you know, and there's really been no assistance there. So I think we can, we can do both those things. You know, in an ideal world, we'd have a report come back to us that would kind of take a big picture look at this whole situation in the county and identify where the gaps are. And I think we've heard both from Supervisor Bushnell as well as other speakers that, you know, the private sector is what's really hurting in many ways, but it's also the fire departments. You know, fire departments struggle greatly with trying to, uh, get the resources they need to continue to protect us and our communities. So I look forward to this coming back and identifying what are the gaps and we know that we're not going to solve it all, you know, but having a picture that talks with tribes, nonprofits, businesses, looks at those gaps and then comes forward and says, here, here's where the gaps are, here's how those gaps could be filled and here's what we think are the priorities right now, because we're going to have to pin it down to some subset of what this one position might be able to accomplish, right? Um, and I, I look forward to that. I think it's a great discussion and community development is economic development. It really is tied directly together, so, um, look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Okay, and before I go to any other board members, I just want to ask Director Adair if he's, feels like he's got good enough direction.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment? I think we're ready to vote. Uh, let me see. Um, well, it's a speaker, yes, it is. I had to get rid of my speaker screen. All right. Thank you, Scott. So I know we have a noon closed session time, so we're, we're, we've got, we're doing pretty good. Always afraid to say that. So we'll go on to our, I think our final item coming from board members and bringing this one forward. It's a presentation from the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association Board of Directors. And, um, I know Ken's here and I don't know who else is from your team, but.
Good morning Supervisors and staff. First of all, thank you for, um, finding some time for us. We greatly appreciate that. I'd like to start out, I, we have some slides that, PowerPoint slides, I think if we could get slide one. I'm not qualified to do that, but.
Eric will bring it up. Do you want the clicker or do you want to just tell me when next? Okay, okay, cool. Okay, perfect, I'll do it. You don't go fishing and he's the someone.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I know what I can't do. Um, so first of all, my name is Ken Bates. I'm here representing the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association. And I'd like to give you a very short history of fishermen's involvement in offshore wind development. And I'd also like to explain, um, for the board, my personal relationship to energy consumption. And this is something that I have kind of steered away for, from for the last 30 years, but I, I think it's, it's worth mentioning. So I'm a third generation commercial fisherman. I was born in 1949 and I've been on the boat since I was 16. I've been in Humboldt County since 1906 to 1970 and I have been fishing out of the Port of Eureka since 1974. In early spring, my wife and I, usually in, in early April, we pack up our boat, um, get it ready to go fishing and we leave the Port of Eureka. We end up fishing somewhere in the California fishing grounds for generally three months. We make back-to-back four-day trips and, um, and we're, our boat's small, it's 30, it's 32 feet. It's got an eight-foot by nine-foot cabin, it's got two bunks, diesel stove, a small sink, and the steering and the engine controls, the electronics are in there. We spend, we spend quite a bit of time on the boat. The federal government considers, uh, my lifestyle to be what they call small-scale artisanal fishermen. I don't, I don't think that way, but that's, that's kind of how we're described. 15 years ago, we decided to go up and fish in Alaska and we reassessed our energy use on the boat. And we used to travel at 14 to 16 knots and we decided to slow down to burn less fuel. For 15 years, we have run at seven knots and we burned time instead of fuel. The result of slowing down has cut our fuel consumption by two-thirds of our normal, uh, use 15 years ago. I live in the city limits of Eureka, but I've been off the grid for 48 years. Our house is powered by two solar panels, a wind turbine, and, uh, at last count, we had eight light bulbs. We have, um, FM radio, a TV, and a vacuum cleaner, which I am qualified to use. 10 years ago, we bought a, a small car, my first ever, I've only owned trucks. The car gets 40 miles to the gallon. And since then, we've limited the use of our 1996 Ford for, for the pickup truck for just work jobs. In the winter, I've been building boats since I moved to Humboldt County and building fishing gear. And rather than take the fishing boat back and forth, I rode basically from my home over on, uh, on Indian Island back and forth. I used to ride a bike, but the traffic and my age has curtailed some of that. Most Americans probably would not prefer to live the way that my wife and I live. For us, it's easy. I'd like to say one other thing, that I've been lucky enough to represent the fishing fleet for about 30 years. And all of the fishermen that you see before you or at meetings, whether they're young or they're old, they're all unpaid volunteers. There's no subsidies, there's no compensation, they're there on their own time. And the reason that they're there in front of you is because they like what they do and they want to preserve that. So enough of that, that's my lead in. I'd like to get to the next slide if Eric can set it up. Okay, so here we go. It's, this is pretty easy. Fishermen are not opposed to renewable energy. Um, we have, while we're concerned about the projects offshore here, we're not opposing these projects, uh, we're not attempting to stop the projects, but what we are trying to do is to figure out how we can survive these projects over the long run. Next slide. Okay, and this talks a little bit about what we're looking at as for the fishing fleet. You know, if California is successful in, in generating the amount of offshore wind that they want to generate, it's going to take about 2,000 miles of fishing grounds in California. The cable lanes to take that transmission power to the beach will, will eat up another at least 800 square miles of fishing area. We're concerned about the loss of shoreside infrastructure, the forecasted closing of Humboldt Bay and the congestion of Humboldt Bay. I think all of these things that we're going to, that we discuss are things that we can solve, but there's stuff that has to be part of the community engagement on these, these problems that we see in front of us. This next slide basically talks just a little bit about sort of how we got to where we are. So in 2015, fishermen in Morro Bay and, and Port San Luis were approached by wind power companies and they started to engage with what is now Castle Wind. So they have, they've got about a seven or eight-year, um, history of working with the wind power companies down there and also engaged, pretty, they're pretty heavily engaged with the city of Morro Bay, who's been very helpful in backing the fishermen. In 2017, up here, RCEA decided to put in an unsolicited bid for a wind power project here and they reached out to Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association. Our association members started to meet with RCEA. They were very generous, generous with their time and eventually what we ended up doing was we negotiated a memorandum of understanding between RCEA and Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association. RCEA has been, um, has been an advocate for the fishing fleet here. They've allowed us to sit through meeting after meeting when the various wind power developers were here with proposals and we greatly appreciate their help. Another thing that we did have done recently was the North Coast Mapping Project, which I'll talk about shortly. And then the last thing, and that's who I'm here, here today representing, is the formation of the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association. So if we took a second and looked at the next slide, we can talk about mapping. One of the things that's been happening for the last four years in all fishing ports, when the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management shows up or the various state agencies, they ask fishermen to point on the map and say, where are you fish? They want us to just point on the map. And fishermen move with a fish. So at one point here in the last four years, uh, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Coastal Commission continued to keep asking this question and they reached out to Humboldt State University. Humboldt State University was going to go ahead and do mapping of the fishing grounds for $350,000. And the way that they were going to do those maps is they were going to go and they were going to interview fishermen and then turn around and do these maps. Fishermen objected to taking anecdotal information that they have used for years and years and commodifying that. And so what happened, the next thing that happened is at another meeting that Baum was in attendance and the rest of the state agencies, our young president Harrison Iback basically said at this meeting, fishermen are going to do their own mapping. Wildly, wildly unpopular. There was not a smile in the room. What ended up happening is that my wife and I ended up writing a grant for Ocean, to Ocean Protection Council and we were able to get the three fishermen's associations, Crescent City, uh, Eureka, and Fort Bragg to sign an inner, essentially a contract between the associations to do this job. And we have an interactive map program. You can look at all the different fisheries by, it's by gear type and by substrate area in the ocean. This is basically a baseline document. So we think that 10, 15, 20, 50 years down the road, this is going to be a place that biologists and managers are going to come back and look at these maps to see what's changed. And in the meantime, it's also available to the public and to wind power developers. Next slide. So the other thing that happened is that we have had repeated requests from the agencies, essentially asking, you know, for some way to contact fishermen. Fishermen are, you know, most of the time they're out of town. When you call Fishermen's Association, you get a machine. So eventually, after the Coastal Commission and the State Lands Commission asked us again and again and again, back in August of, August of 2020, our association and two or three other associations had a open, sort of an open meeting with State Lands, the Coastal Commission, um, and Karen Douglas from the Energy Commission. It's a four-hour meeting. And at that meeting, we were, we were talking about trying to organize and basically Karen Douglas said, well, we'd like to fund this if we can figure out, if you guys can figure out how to put it together. So what we did is we applied for an OPC grant, you know, it's $98,000 a year, it's a two-year grant with a five-year, four-year extension. My wife, Linda Hildebrand, and I were the ones that wrote the grant applications for these monies. Your conversation on this earlier agenda item where you talked about the difficulties of doing that, um, I completely get every bit of that. You know, again, all of our, all of our energies have been, on these grants have been voluntary. So we now are in a position where we have funding, we have some money for a part-time grant manager, and we have a set of deliverables. And those deliverables, some of these deliverables are directly going to affect how wind power gets developed in California. Two of them are fishing community benefit agreements. Um, we have two or three white papers, one concerning the value of fishing grounds, another one impacts and, and ways of to avoid impacts, things like that. So the next thing would be the next slide. So if you look at this slide, there's three things listed there and it's avoid, minimize, and mitigate. And they're, they're in that order. The top one is the most important one. Fishermen and fishermen's associations are trying to figure out how to avoid the impacts. The more of these things that we can avoid, working with developers, working with the state agencies, you know, the less impact there's going to be on fishing communities coastwide. And that includes Humboldt Bay. Uh, the second thing that's listed on there is minimization of impacts. And, and I'm just going to take just one example. You know, if we can sit down with wind power developers and with Crowley, the people that are going to be towing these units out of Humboldt Bay, and we can figure out a schedule so that we avoid peak times when fishermen are using these areas, we can minimize the impacts to the point where they'll have little effect. The very last thing, the very last thing is the mitigation of impacts. And so if we hit the next slide after this. So I, I want to talk about this. This is about fishing community benefit agreements. And fishing community benefit agreements are industry-to-industry contracts and they're not, they're not about a bag of cash. It's not about saying, here's this big pile of money, fishermen are going to get individual payments, you know, or we're going to do those things. It's about figuring out essentially the things that we just talked about. So the first fishing community benefit agreement that basically got started was after the Santa Barbara oil spill blowouts down there in the platforms early on. And as oil development continued into Southern California, by more and more pipes, more and more infrastructure went in, and eventually the oil companies and fishermen got together to put together an agreement and a committee to avoid the impacts that the, they were having on each other. And that's been very successful. In 1999, AT&amp;T and Verizon approached fishermen in Morro Bay and said, we want to land two fiber optic cables here. We know these cables are going to cut right through your fishing grounds, we're going to stop you from working during the time that the cables are being surveyed for and installed, and we want to sit down and figure out an agreement. So AT&amp;T went ahead and wrote up an agreement. It ended up being part, it, part of the Coastal Commission and State Lands document. It's a single sentence, it basically just says that there'll be an agreement between fishermen and developers. The, the Central Coast Cable Fund has, has basically collected and distributed about $450,000 a year for 22 years. And it's been super, super successful and it's very broadly based. The Port of Morro Bay has, has gotten money from the fund to do work in the harbor, they've got scholarship funds, they have safety grants, things like that. No fishermen's, no fisherman gets a check from that fund. You know, there's no individual payment set up there. So the fishing community benefit agreements that we're looking at for wind power are set up on that model with the idea that this is a broad-based thing, you know, if there's money, the first thing is to avoid the impacts and the second thing is to mitigate them. The very third thing, which is a Band-Aid, is a check. And the check has to be used in a way that creates resiliency within the community, long-term resiliency. So not to give money to somebody that's going to go make a movie or something like that, something that the community actually will benefit, you know, in the broader space. Next slide. Okay, this one gets, this one's sticky. Um, this talks about community and agency involvement in these projects. Humboldt County fishermen got to watch the Terre Genne project kind of go up and then disappear. And for us, we were repeatedly asked, Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association got all these calls, come and tell us about, what do you think about this Terre, this Terre Genne project? It's completely outside of our area of expertise. We did not comment. We did not comment positively or negatively on the Terre Genne project. But when we saw that the thing that the supervisors were exposed to for two full, long, huge days, you know, it was obvious to us that fishermen using two minutes or three minutes in a public hearing weren't going to prevail with any points that they could make. Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association approached both the county and the city for a memorandum of cooperation. It was non-binding, but it basically says, we think that these projects are important. We know that we're not trying to stop the projects, but dialogue before the developer has spent millions of dollars might be really helpful. Those, the interest in those two documents by, by the county and by the city, there was no interest, so they never went forward. The next thing that happened was RTI Infrastructure, which is a cable representative company, they're not a cable company. They came up here to land two cables, two, two fiber optic cables. And they have a, they have a, I'm going to just put it politely, a relationship with fishermen in, in Central California. And so one of the things that happened here is Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association immediately tried to get in front of a, a very specific private agreement that RTI made two years before the permit process with a small group of fishermen. We were not able to do that. And what we had tried to do is we had gone to the Coastal Commission and State Lands with a much broader agreement that had essentially a dozen fishermen's associations and 350 fishermen had signed on to that. The support letters that came from, from various city and municipality governments, things like that were more, they had more horsepower than we were able to overcome. And so what ended up happening is RTI was very successful in essentially doing two things. One of the things that they did is they were able to negotiate a $75,000 per year fee for the cable route through the crab grounds and the trawl grounds. Now that sounds like a lot of money, but if you think about it, 22 years ago, AT&amp;T paid 100. And if you do the math using the, the cost of living for those last 22 years, that cable route, you know, dollar equivalent in 2022 would have been about $160,000. And, and because they were able to do that, effectively RTI lowered the bar for all the cable mitigation, mitigation fees on the West Coast. So we're trying to be in a position here, you know, to communicate and, and avoid those kinds of things in the future. You know, the money, the $9 million that those cables could have come in, could have done a lot of things in this port over our 20-year period. You know, we're not crying about spilt milk. Our goal is to go forward and do a better job on the next deal. And next slide, Eric. So that gets down to how we communicate. And I'm going to use probably the best example that I can think of. And that is the damage that dams have done on the Calamath River. Commercial fishermen have known about this damage forever and ever and ever. But the problem is, is that the people that really knew didn't get listened to. And that was the native tribes, the tribal people living on those rivers, watched that river just get wrecked. And it took those folks 20 years to get the attention to get to where we are now, where we can start to address that problem. You know? HFMA, Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association, it took us 18 years trying to get the city and to get grant funding to take the old Lozio Fish Company down and rebuild Eureka Fishermen's Terminal. That particular project, you know, it got rid of a lot of urban bright bite, you know? We were able to go ahead and put in a new facility and Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association and the city worked jointly. We, we were joint applicants on all the EDA funds, the Obama money, the money that came from the Coastal Conservancy to build that, to build that, that particular facility. So what we're hoping with this process now is that we're hoping in the future, because we can't undo the past, we're hoping that we get the attention of the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and for this, and also for the State Energy Commission when they start to look at these other areas and cable areas. The sites that were picked off of Humboldt and the sites that were picked off of Morro Bay were done by BOM without any input from the fishing fleet. You know, we know this, we know this stuff is coming, but again, this is trying to figure out how to avoid impacts. Last slide. So while fishermen think it's a bad idea to convert fishing grounds, which we get sustainable food off of, you know, into electricity, we also know that we, that we, as a community, we have to figure out how to have both. You know, we're going to see these changes on the ocean, you know, we're all going to make changes in our life to change how we use energy, those kinds of things. So part of my little deal today is to figure out some way so that collectively we're going forward in a way that is, that benefits the most people, you know, without just completely wiping somebody out. I greatly appreciate the, the energy and time that the supervisors have put in on this, that Humboldt Area Foundation has put in on this, you know, the Jared Huffman, the energy he's doing on these things. And I just hope that we can continue forward and take some of the bumps out of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And I don't know if there's any questions for you right now. Supervisor Madron doesn't. And I also, I'd say after we go to public comment, I'd say sit close to the front because you might call back up again. You never know. But Supervisor Madron?
Ken, I want to applaud you and your organization. You know, we just spent a little half hour, 45 minutes talking about grant writing, capacity building, community development. And here you have a group of commercial fishermen, fisher folk, an industry, private sector that has some issues, you know, trying to survive, trying to survive wind development and all kinds of other things. So what did you do? You formed a nonprofit. You went out and you said, rather than having somebody else do this mapping, we want to do it. So you formed a nonprofit. I know there are other fishermen's nonprofits as well, but this one in particular, in order to be able to do the mapping, in order to be able to have a voice in this process. So again, I applaud you and your organization because that's really taken the, the line by the hand, right? And, and making sure that you're at the table and, and really developing that information. So I think that's fantastic. You know, I, I often get questions from people, well, how far out do they fish? You know, these towers are going to be what, 25 miles or so offshore? So that is fishing grounds. People do go out there and just in a very brief way, can you tell me what kind of fishing we do at 25 to 30 miles?
On the inside edge of the wind area is, is that, that is still trawl and longline grounds. So there's Eureka boats that fish in, in, in around that area.
20 miles out.
Yeah, 20 miles out. And so that will generally be for groundfish, you know? And then the albacore fleet works out there. I think that Jake is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about albacore fishing in those areas, you know? These fish move through these places. We don't know what's exactly going to happen on that kind of thing, but that's the area. Fishing fleet moves a lot. Most of our fishing for my wife and I in California right now is from, essentially from Fort Bragg clear down to, you know, below Monterey. That's where we spend most of our summers. We've gone clear up to Alaska to fish. The other thing, I would thank you for your comments. Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association has, has managed to procure four grants over the last 10 or 12 years. And it's not something that's easy to do and we certainly had absolutely no expertise whatsoever in stumbling around doing it.
Thank you.
And I did want to say, it sounds like you may have someone else as part of your presentation and, because we had planned for 15 minutes and we have a time set at 12, so if we can...
I'll be short.
Yeah, it's like, it's, everything's been very interesting. It's unfortunately time just kind of let goes fast, but, but you can always come back, I'm sure, in the future.
I'll be short.
Okay, welcome.
My name is Jake McMasters. I know a few of you. I have a, my family and I have a fishing boat here near Eureka, have for 25 years or so. I'm also a executive board member of Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association and I'm on the board of American Albacore Fishermen's Association that represents fishermen from San Diego to the Canadian border. As far as your question about how far we fish, I personally have been 1,400 miles offshore and anywhere from Morro Bay to the north side of Queen Charlotte Island in Canada. So yeah, those are fishing grounds. I have had a circle for two ton of albacore in the wind call area, so that's a little depressing. But I'm here to ask for your guys' help. The Harbor Commission came to a group of us fishermen and asked us to basically form a wind advisory panel for Humboldt Bay. Ken's association is a statewide waters. The Crowley facility is here. They want to build every wind turbine here for California, Oregon, Washington, as far as we have been told. We have the benefit of no bridge over our entrance, so that is a problem for us. But it's, you know, it's not like they're going to build 10 or 15 of these and go away. We're going to have to deal with these for the foreseeable future. And like Ken's slide said, the closing of the bar is an economic problem if you're trying to leave, but if you're trying to outrun a storm and come back, it's potentially a dangerous problem. And so this wind advisory has the Harbor Commission kind of behind us to help when the developers show up and say, who do we talk to? We were hoping that we'd get the supervisors behind us as well. So when a developer shows up and you guys go, well, have you talked to the fishermen? And they say, well, we don't know who. You can kind of point them towards us. I can get you guys the names of all of us. There are seven of us, including Ken and myself, and we represent just about every fishery that is done out of Eureka, whether you fish right out front or leave and come back. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. And Jake, I think what I would say is, I mean, I think you could ask all the supervisors individually, you know, if they can send people to you or there could probably be something come to the board in the future as well, potentially, but, but thanks for letting us know that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone, did you have a question for Jake?
Yeah, Jake, I think part of the reason is, is they have felt a little bit out of the, the picture up until recently. And I think Jake and I talked a couple of years ago, I think, we first started talking and stuff. And they weren't getting much traction and now they're getting the traction they need. And I don't know if it's the Terre Genne effect. I know, you know, the, the sales today and, you know, it is all about money because the sale is today. So we'll see where that goes and then we'll see who the players are. But basically you guys want to be on the list. You don't feel represented is what, is what you've said repeatedly, either through CoreHub or through anything else that's going on. You don't feel the proper representation and the people that are going to have the, the biggest impact, at the end of the day, would I think that would be the people that are using those waters. So I, I, I fully agree with that and I, you know, I, I think as Ken said, you guys all want renewable energy. I think it's, you know, I think we're all going to have to take a little haircut to, to accept that we're all going to take a little beating to get to that point because of the situation we're in. So, and I appreciate you guys stepping up for that, but I think as long as your name's out there and you're, you're at the seat at the table, so you, you know, what is it? Better be at the table or you're on the menu, so.
Yeah. And that's the same. We don't disagree with renewable energy at all. We prefer to not be put out of business or move away.
No, I fully agree. I don't, replacing one business with another business, I think as Ken's first slide, they don't like the idea of electricity taking the place of sustainable fishery, but, so thank you.
Thank you.
Both Jake and, and Ken. Great present, great presentation.
So any other questions at the moment? Nope. We will go to public comment. I'll go to those on the phone first and then we'll go to anyone who's in the audience. So we have 7454. Welcome.
First off, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for enabling one of our, I consider shining stars as far as individuals in our, our community, Ken, to, to, to bring this to your forum. This is very important that this topic is aired out there. If I'm looking for expertise in this field, I, I go to, go to Mr. Bates. I did wish to make mention, you know, we've had quite a few articles out here and there seems to be a misunderstanding amongst the public as far as how valuable our fishermen are. Some very negative things are brought out there. Of course, they're always brought out there. Everybody has a right to their opinion, but I really wish they would educate themselves for a person like Ken who, who walks the walk and talks the talk, not just talks the talk, but walks the walk when it comes to energy and, and, and his lifestyle and things. I think that's an important thing for people to realize. And I, I strongly support, supporting the fishermen. And I think you'll find that the fishermen are going to be very closely aligned with the tribes on these particular topics because fishing is subsistence for the tribes, always has been. And I, I think the, the environment as represented by the fishermen and the tribes and people who say negative things about, you know, they have angst with the trawlers and some of us also have angst with that, with the people like Ken and these other fishermen who go risk their lives so that we can have fresh seafood on our plates in all kinds of inclement weather and things is greatly appreciated. So thank you, my opportunity to speak on this very important topic today.
All right. Thank you. So we will go to those in public. Anyone else here wish to comment on this item? That was a, that was a thumbs up kind of many, is an applause. Welcome.
Yeah, Bob Weiner here again. First of all, I support the fishermen. One of my very first jobs in Humboldt County in '74 was a crab fisherman out of Humboldt Bay and been across that bar many a times. Actually had to sit outside the bar many a times also waiting to come in. So I understand how narrow that space is and I, I appreciate the fact that hopefully they can, you know, negotiate with the timing on that, you know? You know, I think the fishermen probably should have priority because there are smaller boats and such and the larger boats can negotiate the, the bar a little bit easier, I would assume. That's just an assumption. So I would, I would like to, you know, support them in their further dialogue. The one question I do have is what are the restrictions going to be around these platforms out there for, for the fishermen? Because I, you know, I watch TV. I see in the Gulf Coast fishermen are fishing around the oil rigs and they're really prolific and I don't even know how that relates to our fishing stock or waters and whatever, but that would be something that I would suggest they could actually look into also, you know, so in support of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. I don't see anyone else in the public come to the board. I think, you know, appropriate motion would be to accept the report and invite you back in the future.
I will move to accept the report.
I'll second and thank you for the presentation. You know, our, Humboldt County has been made up of fishermen, loggers, you know, it's, we've seen cycles and we don't want to keep losing anyone in our, in Humboldt County.
All right. Anyone else? Motion on second, I do believe.
Hi, Bob.
Looks like we have our vote tab up too. All right. It passes 5-0. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Great presentation.
All right. So we can't announce closed session right now. We have to come back in five minutes. All right. So we'll take a five-minute break and then go to closed. Do we come back in here? In fact, item here, closed session. So county, interim county council Miles, can you brief us on closed session?
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to public comment, 7454.
Just like with John Ford, your Christmas present is I'm minimizing my public comment to give you a short meeting, which you have closed down by 12. Congratulations. I did wish to make comment on this. You are, again, my understanding is going in regarding potential negotiations and it's time set, so I assume you have people in the House to participate on this. I will always have the back and continue to have the back of your in-home healthcare workers and they should have at least the same wages increases that you folks gave yourselves. I also did want to make mention, maybe I don't understand, but in the past, one of your department heads was given a special raise, which I think he would justify for all the work he's been doing. That's your director of public works, John Ford. I think it would be really, I don't know, just about insulting if you had another set of wages and he didn't not get the same amount as the other department heads. These two items were separate. And as far as equity and equality, if you give your department heads, other department heads a 732 or whatever you're giving, I think John Ford would be entitled to being equal if it's 10, 10% or whatever it is. It's a little bit input. This is a managerial thing. It's always good to send out a message, not good to send out a message, you're greatly appreciated, and then kind of take it back later. That, that was, that is not the kind of message. Most places in management, and I was a management major, business major with a management emphasis at Humboldt County. One of the first rules, everybody should be treated the same, otherwise you have problems within your system. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
All right. And there's no other callers, so with that we'll adjourn. Do we have any guesses of what time we might come back? Is that a no? Is that a no? We'll be back at some point in time.
I'd say an hour. We could just, you'll want a lunch break as well. We could probably shoot for 1:30 for the report out.
Okay, as long as we have three of us here.
That way it's solid.
Okay, cool.
Just for the report out. Are you all free coming back? I'm here.
Do we have a report out of closed session?
No, Chair Bass, there was no reportable action taken with regard to item L1.
All right. Then we're adjourned.